Do you have an order? We have, we have with us tonight Mrs. Susan Hicks and we are delighted to have you here to do the official swearing in in the dark.[400.11][400.11](laughter) Who will be going by candlelight evidently. All right, Ms. Stacey Caldwell.
I've got two crewmates with me.
Left hand on the Bible and raise your right please. Let's see, let's do this differently.[432.56][432.56](laughter) There we go.[434.16][434.16](laughter) Because you'll be blocked if not. Okay. Do you, Stacey Caldwell, solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
Yes.
Do you, Stacey Caldwell, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
Yes.
Do you, Stacey Caldwell, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. David Hensley. Do you, David Hensley, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, David Hensley, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, David Hensley, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.[631.20][631.20](applause) Good. Okay, come over here, I want you to sign. Mr. Philip Holmes. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Philip Holmes, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Philip Holmes, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Philip Holmes, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Good job. Mr. Robert Levy. Awesome. Left hand on the Bible.[817.12][817.12](laughter) Yeah, you only just get it on this side. There you go.
There we go.
Perfect. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Do you, Robert Levy, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Robert Levy, solemnly and sincerely swear to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
So help me God, I will.
Do you, Robert Levy, swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of a member of the Moore County Board of Education according to the best of your skill and ability and according to law, so help you God?
So help me God, I will.
Congratulations. Do we want to get a picture of all three of the new members together?
Four.
Of four, excuse me, returning member and three additional members before we move on into the meeting. And then one of the whole board, yeah. Ed, Ed, she wants to get the whole board together too after, after the new members.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, very much appreciate it.
In my role as temporary chair, it is my pleasure to call to order this organizational meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. We have a quorum present and the purpose of this meeting is the election of board officers. And the first order of business is the election of the chair.
Dr. Grimacy.
I will note that we will take nominations and that no...
Dr. Grimacy.
Why is legal counsel waving at me?
Approval of the agenda.
The agenda lists approval of the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence before the...
That's not in the script.[1028.88][1028.88](laughter) All right, let's do this and we'll say at this time, it is my pleasure as the temporary chair, who does this once a year, so I, I, this is only my 20th time doing this, to ask for a motion from a member of the board for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, all in favor of approval, excuse me, is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, the agenda is approved. At this time, I will ask Dr. Anita Alpenfels to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And so now, it's at this time that I call us to order, and I appreciate everybody's indulgence, for the purpose of this organizational meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. We do have a quorum present and the purpose of this meeting is the election of board officers and the first order of that business is the election of chair. I will receive nominations and it will note that there is no requirement for a second for nominations. So at this time, do I hear a nomination for the office of board chair?
Dr. Grimacy, I would just like to make a statement and then a nomination. Libby's leadership throughout the past year has been unwavering. Her experience as an educator has provided the board with a teacher's perspective. However, her outstanding leadership of all, of our school discussions and decision-making processes, both inside and out of the classroom, showed Libby's true leadership qualities of accountability, empathy, integrity, collaboration, and respect. She consistently provided factual and timely communication during the many, many hours of board meetings and our calls directly with the superintendent. Libby has worked with board members, superintendent, and staff over the past year to lead the school system through crucial changes of educating our students during the COVID-19 local and national health pandemic, and also led us through final steps of school construction, ribbon-cutting ceremonies at Aberdeen and Southern Pines Elementary Schools, as well as new construction of classrooms and auxiliary gym and athletic facilities at Northmore High School. Libby's leadership has focused on our key goal of providing school district framework of engaging and inspiring our students to succeed. It is with great pleasure this evening that I make a nomination, to nominate a Libby Carter as chair for our school board.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. At this time, are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion to accept the nomination of Elizabeth Libby Carter for chair by acclamation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. At this time, there's been a motion and appropriately seconded to accept the nomination of Elizabeth Carter for chair by acclamation. All, well, I guess we have it by acclamation, but all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you very much, I am very happy to give the nomination to Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you very much for that nomination, that was kind words and for the second and for your support as we enter a new year. At this time, it is the next order of business is the election of the vice chair. As a reminder, nominations do not need a second. Do I hear nominations for the office of vice chair?
Madam Chair, I nominate Pam Thompson as vice chair.
The name of Pam Thompson has been placed into nomination. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. Is there a motion to accept the nomination of Pamela Thompson for vice chair by acclamation?
So moved.
A motion has been made, is there a second? I think I heard a second.
Second.
Yeah. All right, the motion by Mr. Holmes, a second by Mr. Dennison, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing a 7-0 vote, Ms. Pamela Thompson is elected as vice chair. Congratulations, Ms. Thompson. At this time, the floor is open for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, the board to, in a closed session, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information and student information pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 1A5, and A6, and General Statute 115C dash 319 and 20USC 1232G, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3, including a discussion of LP versus Moore County Board of Education.
All right, a motion has been placed on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Chair, point of order, should we do the other item on the agenda, board chair signature before going into closed session?
No, actually, I'll ask, thank you, Mr. Dennison, the question, Madam Chair, is whether or not we need a recommendation from the superintendent regarding temporary provision of the chair's signature stamp, but given that we have the same chair, is that necessary, Counselor?
It, it's not, the authorization's already in place, so if...
Yes. And so for that reason, Mr. Dennison, I let the chair roll because I didn't think it was necessary, so with your permission, Madam Chair, I think you can proceed with your vote on closed session.
We have a motion on the floor, would they second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Dennison, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seeing none, the motion carries, the board will now enter closed session. This is a work session, not a business meeting, which means there is no time limit on the length of closed session. However, we anticipate returning somewhere approximately 6:30.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could offer just a request, that we convene in closed session at 6:25 and just allow some folks that aren't going to be staying just to offer their congratulations before they leave to our new board members?
I think that would be a great idea, so we are quite, quite eager to welcome our new board members and I know there are family members and friends and supporters who are here interested in, in offering their support, so yes, we will move to closed session in about five minutes and if you would like to take more pictures or, or simply say a congratulations and move on, then please by all means do so. Thank you so very much.
If you would, take your hand, sanitize your Bible.
All right, this time I'll call back to order this work session of the Moore County Board of Education on Monday, December 7th. We're going to now move on to pending action and discussion. Dr. Gramacy.
Madam Chair, you have the executive summary for Item 6A, Moore County Board of Education meeting calendar, January of 2021 through June of 2022. For our board members who are new and have not been through this process before, you'll note that this is a calendar for the next 18 months, which allows for an overlap of six months into the prior year. That'll be reviewed again next December. So you never quite get to those six months, but it gives all of you all sort of a general idea of what that calendar is as you make your vacation plans into the following spring after that. You still retain the ability to revise that a year from now. And so, absent any questions from the board, the superintendent just offers this with the clerk as our clerical role, and ask you all to look at that, let the chair and I know if you have any concerns about that calendar between now and next Monday. We'll be happy to take that under consideration.
And by way of explanation, if you look at the March to April meetings on both calendars, you'll note that we only, we have one meeting at the end of March and one in April because we're working around spring break at that point, so the dates are slightly varied. And then in July, we will do a combined work session and business meeting, such that we work around the July 4th week. Those are the only things that are unusual, otherwise you have a work session the first Monday of the month and a board meeting the second Monday of the month. So if you'll let us know if you see any problems with the, with the actual calendar, but otherwise you can pretty well go ahead and mark your, mark your dates. No questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
October 11th, although not a North Carolina holiday, that is a federal holiday. That is Columbus Day. North Carolina is one of 26 states that doesn't observe Columbus Day, but it is a federal holiday.
I'll defer to the chair on that, Mr. Hensley, because we've always, we've always met on Columbus Day in the past, and so the board would, you know, as part of their consideration, decide whether or not you wanted to separate that out to the following Monday, or there'd be some options the board could look at there. If you want to just discuss that with the chair, and you all negotiate that if there's a recommendation to be had.
If you'll just drop me an email, and we can look at it and see if you have a recommendation for a different way. On Labor Day, we go to the Tuesday after Labor Day Monday. That is something we could consider doing.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Let's move on.
Okay. At this time, I'll introduce Dr. Tim Locklear to come forward for Item 6B.
Good evening, Dr. Locklear.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Gramacy. Madam Chair, board members, good evening. This evening, I'm bringing to you an update on our status and implementation of K-5 Plan A, and also to discuss an amended recommendation of how we will, we would recommend, staff would recommend we implement Plan A as we move forward in the second semester. In October, the board endorsed and voted to approve transition to Plan A for all K-5 students four days a week, with Wednesdays remaining a remote asynchronous learning day to begin second semester, January 5th, 2021. As we move through the presentation tonight, you will see an amended recommendation for how we staff would recommend, superintendent would recommend we implement Plan A in K-5 moving forward. But as we've implemented this throughout, Laura, if you'll move to the next slide, please. The foundation of our work, foundation of how we plan reentry, really starting back to the spring with our school teams and our principals, it's really been grounded in these considerations and guiding principles as we looked at reentry work, putting plans together. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure to ensure possible that we ensure the safety and wellness of our students, our staff, and our families. We wanted to ensure the equitable instruction for all our students, making sure we're getting them access as best possible to hotspots, reliable internet packets, whatever it may be. We wanted to ensure that our students were getting high-quality instruction, whether it was face-to-face or whether it was through the Connect Virtual Academy. We knew we needed to be adaptable as we moved through the process of planning and implementing, that we need to be adaptable to our planning based on new information we may receive from the governor's office, changing guidelines we might receive from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And we wanted to always strive to communicate as clearly as possible throughout the process with all our stakeholder groups internally as well as externally. In October, as I noted, you as a board approved that we move forward and begin K-5 Plan A at the beginning of second semester. As noted, that was approved to be implemented four days a week, with Wednesdays remaining an asynchronous remote learning day. We'll talk about that amended recommendation in just a moment. But we also committed to be prepared to, for Grade 612 to also implement Plan A in the second semester if allowed by the governor. So we committed to simultaneously planning that as we move forward. The timeline we committed to and our team and school-based teams worked on, once that was endorsed by you as a board, our Connect Academy went, Connect Academy team and our principals planned the process for enrollment and re-enrollment in the Connect Academy for second semester, and that was for all students, all K-12 students. Also, at the end of October, moving into November 13th, we opened up transportation enrollment for the second semester, again K-12. And then on November 2nd, moving through November 13th, second semester Connect Academy enrollment and re-enrollment took place, and that closed on November 13th, again for all K-12 students. As soon as that closed, our Connect Academy team and our school-based teams have been working on the scheduling and the staffing of the Connect Academy and face-to-face classes for the second semester. And I really want to commend our Connect Academy team and our school-based teams on the work they did with working on staffing. Staffing is almost complete for our Connect Academy at this time. And one of the primary goals that we had for that, for staffing our Connect Academy, was to eliminate the number of teachers who were teaching both virtual and face-to-face at the same time. That was a goal of that Connect Academy team and the school-based team. And certainly want to commend their work, because at this point, when you're looking at our kindergarten through eighth grade teachers, we have no elementary and middle school teachers at this time who are teaching both Connect Academy and face-to-face classes at the same time. So I really want to commend their work. And so, we certainly, the Connect Academy team was able to make that happen as they've been working. Our scheduling is still ongoing, our K-5 scheduling is almost done, but our middle school and high school scheduling for Connect Academy face-to-face is ongoing. And so that brings us to our refined recommendation for K-5 as we implement Plan A for our K-5 implementation in second semester, based on the fact that we've been able to be targeted in our staffing of the Connect Academy and not have staff that are teaching both Connect Academy and face-to-face at the same time, and based on the fact that we've been monitoring and working with, led by Dr. Powers, working with the Moore County Health Department. We've been monitoring our COVID-19 metrics and looking at school-based secondary spread. And what we've seen is that, is that has not happened at a great way. We have not seen that. When someone has, when we've had a confirmed positive in our schools, we haven't seen that spread a lot. And so we've been, we've continued to monitor that. And then based on that data, our current recommendation is that we begin five days a week, beginning on January 5th, 2021. And so that refined recommendation that we bring to you tonight is going from four days with Wednesday not being a day that we're meeting face-to-face, to being five days a week, beginning on January 5th. So the next slide really is just a really quick reminder of what does that look like for our K-5 students. Where our face-to-face students will attend together on a day-to-day basis, essentially, as I'll share in just a moment, a little bit of data about our Connect Academy, we're looking at about 80% of our student body coming back face-to-face second semester. That's K-12. But so we're looking at, where we're currently under Plan B, have about 30, 35% of our kids in a school in a day. We're looking at planning for about 80% of our students at a school being at that school in a day. So classes will be at full capacity with minimal social distancing. We'll continue to limit visitors to the school campuses as we're doing at this point. And that minimal social distancing, you'll see that take place in the classroom, where we're currently keeping students six feet apart. You won't always see that in every classroom. When it's possible, we'll do it, but when it's not, you will no longer see six feet of social distancing. We'll also see some minimal social distancing at lunch, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that'll look like in a second. And we'll also see that minimal social distancing on our school buses under Plan A in K-5, where under Plan B, it's one student a seat. In Plan A, you'll have more than one student a seat. And so that'll look differently under Plan A for K-5 as we move forward. So I want, with that in mind, I wanted to share some highlights of some of the logistical preparations that our school teams, our principals, and our, and our district staff has been working on to mitigate risk as best possible. Certainly, as already noted, Dr. Powers and our team collaborating actively with the local health department on a weekly basis, certainly as needed throughout the week anytime we have a situation. Our principals and school teams have been looking at K-12, but certainly at K-5, knowing we're bringing back students five days a week, have been looking at how do we effectively and efficiently screen now all of our students and staff every day versus 33, 35%, now looking at 80%. We know that's going to be a logistical challenge, but they're looking at that and planning for that, and I have no doubt they will, they will work through that as we open up in January. Our school teams, our principals, they're continuing to look at how do we consider and plan to promote social distancing as best possible. Already noted that we won't see the six feet in every situation, but when we can, we want to make sure we ensure that as best possible. When students are transitioning in the hallway, as you see tonight in Madeeds Creek with the bulls on the floor, and they're, they're teaching their kids to keep that six feet apart as they're walking around the school, we're going to continue to do that work, and our principals and our school teams continue to do that work in transitions and hallways, et cetera. Talk about lunch a little bit. Our school principals will be using a combination of either walking their students to the, to the lunchroom to pick up lunches and take back to the classroom to eat, or if staffing's available, having those meals delivered, like they currently are being delivered in Plan B. Now, we have some classrooms with larger class sizes, and in those situations, the principals may split those classes up if there's another location available and staffing available to supervise the students so they can spread out to eat. They also can use the cafeteria to do that and spread out so they can eat lunches safely as possible. Keep in mind, though, we, we certainly do not want to mix classroom cohorts as best we can. We want to, we want to keep a classroom cohort together and not mix them up with our classrooms. So that limits some of what we're able to do, but our principals are working through that and going to use any, any space they have available and any staff they have available to help make that happen. So we talked about transportation sign-up. Our transportation for second semester sign-up was from late October to November 13th, last for first semester, current semester. We had about 3,500 students sign up. You see the next number is the number of students who actually rode the bus first semester, about 1,700 students. We had about 3,600, 3,700 students request transportation for second semester. You can see those sub-numbers. You can see a big increase with elementary students who was currently riding, pretty substantial increase with our middle school students that are currently riding. And you can see a smaller increase with our high school students request that are currently riding the bus. So our transportation department has been working on routing and will be notifying those families if they're not currently riding, mailing a letter to the household, or handing those to the students who are currently riding to make sure they know their bus riding, their numbers, their times for the second semester. Noted our Connect Academy work, Connect Virtual Academy work, and the work of the team and our school principals, and really want to commend them for their work. They've really worked very hard to staff the Connect Academy as well as working on scheduling. Room and window closing November 13th, we had 2,237 students who enrolled in Connect Academy for the second semester. To put that in perspective, we currently have 3,600 students in the Connect Academy here in the first semester. So that's about 1,400 students who are returning for face-to-face instruction second semester. But we still have about 2,200, 2,300 students who will be attending the Connect Academy, all virtual instruction for the second semester. Already noted that we were able to eliminate as best possible the number of teachers who are teaching both face-to-face and the Connect Academy at the same time. Currently, here in the first semester, we had about 236 teachers who are teaching both the Connect Academy and face-to-face at the same time. About 110 of those were at the elementary level, at the K-5 level. So through the targeted work of our Connect Academy team and the principals, they've been able to reduce that to where we currently have none. No K-5 teachers who are teaching both, no 6-8 teachers. We have a few at the high school level, about 10% of our teachers who are teaching Connect are teaching both. But we have to keep in mind at the high school level, they got the four-by-four block schedule. It does allow for a specific time to teach that online class. And so, we certainly are appreciative of the work they've done. This number here, the next bullet, really, really shows you how that's happened. We had about 400 teachers, we currently have about 400 teachers teaching in the Connect and face-to-face. Second semester, we have 93 teachers currently scheduled to be teaching the Connect Academy. So that shows you that it's much more targeted to eliminate teachers doing both as best possible. That's about 300 less teachers. Some of that because we have less students, but certainly because of the targeted approach we're able to take in a thoughtful, careful, and mindful way. We do have, at the K-8 level, we have some students who will be changing teachers, and that's not the norm. That's not what we would normally want to do at the elementary and middle schools, to change teachers midway through the year. But we knew that was a potential for that with online and with Connect Academy. And so our teachers and our principals are working to make that as smooth transition as possible. We have some open house nights scheduled, the 10th, and for middle school next week. Laura? So our timeline moving forward. As noted, our transportation department will be sending out letters, we notified by about transportation routing, times, pickup times, bus numbers. We've already noted the superintendent's revised recommendation, refined recommendation that we open up K-5 Plan A five days a week, January 5th. So that will, that will begin our semester with K-5 going face-to-face five days a week if that refined recommendation is approved by the board. And we have committed and continuously to simultaneously plan for a likely Plan A implementation during second semester for Grade 612, if allowed by the governor. So that's work that we'll continue to be planning on being able to do as quickly as we're able. And myself or any member of the team is certainly available for questions and discussion.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
I really glad to see we're going to have our K-5 back five days a week. You know, I really wanted that when the governor made the decision, but I knew it had to be done safely, and it looks like you've done that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And I have to add that I think this is very good news for our K-5 students. It can't come soon enough for the 6-12, but obviously, that is a situation that is not 100% under our control at this point. On behalf of the teachers who are now going to be able to focus both either virtually or within the classroom, I'm thrilled. We, we asked a great deal of our teachers in the first semester, saddling them with students in front of them and students on a computer. And they really rose to the occasion and have made the best of what could be, was a very difficult and could have been a very bad situation. They turned it into a very good situation for many, many children. So we appreciate that, but I'm even happier to see that we're going to eliminate a lot of that duplication for our lower grades especially. So thank you for that. Other questions? Mr. Hensley?
I had a question, Dr. Locklear. How from, I know we did a survey earlier in the year to get teachers' feedback as well as support staff, just all across our different areas. How are our teachers feeling and our support staff feeling about, about all of our students coming back? coming back and not having that one Wednesday to use as a day to disinfect? I know we, we, we may have lost some simply because of them just not wanting to do that, but give us a little feedback on, on what you're hearing from our staff and our teachers.
Well, I can give probably more anecdotal feedback than I can specific data at this point. We do, we did do a survey as we looked at coming back and presented some of that data to you in October and certainly can go back and share some of that with you again. But our, I think our teachers overwhelmingly, our principals overwhelmingly want to have the students back, but there's, there's concern that we do that as safe as possible. And they're certainly concerned. There's concern of having our students back with, with the minimum social distancing, but I think they appreciate the fact that we're trying to take a thoughtful approach to it.
What additional? Dr. Locklear, please specify the feedback you've gotten from elementary principals and from the teacher advisory committee.
They, they very much want our kids back, and they want them back five days a week. And we've, you know, I've engaged with, and we've been able to engage through the teacher advisory council with our teacher leadership, been able to engage with our principals a lot and ask them about their thoughts about coming back five days a week, what's their feelings on that, and it's unanimous that they, they want to see those students back. But we want to do it in the most thoughtful, you know, careful way we can.
Mr. Hensley?
I have four questions, one of which is a compound question. So my first question is, you mentioned planning for 6th through 12th grade. Is that planning complete?
Yes, sir. We're, it's not complete yet, but we're working, the one piece that's continuing to be planned is the scheduling of our Connect Academy. That's ongoing as we speak. The plan is to have that completed before the holidays. Obviously, we're going to inform, form our, our students of their schedules before we go to break. The other piece that's continuing to be planned is our transportation routing. You have to plan two different routes for second semester. One, that's the B plan and refine that where you've got students on, you know, in Cohort A and Cohort B, and it can be two different types of routing for both of those. And now we also are planning and the process of planning for those to come together and be in one route in a Plan A. So that, that's in process, but, but the expectation is that we have that ready as we open second semester.
Okay, awesome. So my second question is, I noticed that other school districts opened up their schools, their K-5 and Plan A on 5 October, the first day the governor, you know, go. So when the governor gives the go to open 6 through 8 or 6 through 12, what's the time from the time he gives the word until you believe Moore County schools can implement Plan A for either 6 through 8 or 6 through 12?
Discuss that with staff, and we believe we could, we can make that happen in three weeks.
Okay, awesome. Good. The, the numbers on the Connect Academy, the 2,237, are those numbers K-12 or just K-5?
K-12.
Okay. I noticed that it's 18, so it's K-12, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. So I noticed that this is approximately 18% of the students. When you polled parents, remember several months ago when you polled the parents, 26% of the households didn't want their children, they want, 26% of the households wanted their children to remain virtual was the result of the Moore County polls. So 18% of the students remaining in Virtual Academy is nowhere near 26 of the households. Can you explain why, or do you have a theory why once offered the option, most people chose to return to school by stay and connect like they said during the poll?
I don't have a theory, no, sir.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a huge difference. It's 18% of the students, but 26% of the households said they wanted.
Yeah, you're, I, I might be able to speculate on that. Starting next week, you'll start getting my weekly report on our management of COVID. I think Ms. Carter shared it with you this week. Do that every week. I, I think we've seen a trend in the direction of greater confidence in in-person instruction since that survey was taken back in early October, late September, something like that. So I, it doesn't surprise me at all that that number has been reduced, and if we did that same survey today, I, I bet that we'd do a lot better than 26%. I think the percentage of parents would be down. Remember, 18% of the students represents fewer than that households, right?
Right, so it's even more. It's half, half the households didn't do what they said they were going to do.
Yeah, I, I think people are seeing across the country that if you manage schools effectively with masks and all the other things that you do, try to do the social distancing as much as you can, and you can limit that secondary transmission, you can build confidence, and you can keep schools open.
And give out factual information and build confidence. So in my final question, and thank you for your patience, is I've noticed that many school districts, I don't have the number in front of me, but many school districts have already gone to Plan A for K-12. And I've been told those are smaller districts that have excess capacity so they can spread students out. So here's my question. Have you all, has Moore County schools looked at underutilized schools? Do we have any underutilized schools where we could say, hey, this K-8th grade is underutilized so we could go to Plan A for this school immediately because we have the space? Is that possible?
We did, we did analyze the, looking at that on various grade levels, and our determination is that that was not going to be something that was feasible, but Dr. Gramm.
I'd call it preliminary analysis that, that went far enough to show that it was going to be so complicated that it, it wouldn't be feasible and that would be uneven across the district. And so you, you really, it really wasn't one that we could sustain or do so in a way that was equitable. And so we, we halted that early in the process because of the complexity and by the fact that we had another job to do, and that was to keep moving forward with the whole district in the direction that ultimately we want to get to, and that's all the kids back in school except for those that choose not to be.
So it's inequitable between school districts, right? I mean, that's a given because some school districts are still 100% virtual, some are already have K-5, K-12 in Plan A. It's already equitable between school districts. So I think that we need to do, even on a school-by-school basis, if we can get one school K-8 back in school, we have a duty to those children. And if it's not possible at other schools, that's just a reality, but it's not acceptable to be able to have one or more schools in K-8 or even, I'm sorry, 6 through 8 or even 6 through 12 in Plan A and not do it because, well, it's not equitable. Well, it's unfair to those children that could be in class five days a week, and we need to give it our best effort.
Well, keep in mind that all your K-5 schools are going to be Plan A.
Correct, correct. And I'm talking, I may have misspoke, I'm talking 6 through 8 or 6 through.
Okay, 6, 6 through 12 would be, so in other words, do we have a situation like Ashe County that was so tiny and, and they had so much space in their schools that they could do it? Remember, there aren't that many, there are some that do it, there's a precedent for it, but there aren't that many that were able to accomplish that. And, and among school districts across North Carolina, that's very much the exception rather than the rule. So that being the case, I think the heavy lift right now is to make sure that we safely move all the K-5 children in and that we also accommodate the migration of a substantial number of 6 through 12 students who are going to leave the Remote Academy and come in. So I think right now the first priority is to make sure that that first step is taken. And then as you get into the second semester, if there's opportunities to expand on that, nobody's averse to doing that as long as we can do it safely.
Correct, and that's exactly what I'm advocating. Obviously, you have to have priorities, but if, if there's a situation where one school has, happens to have excess space such as a gymnasium, and they can spread out and get 6 through 8 in Plan A, that should be looked at school by school.
I don't know that if I'd use the gymnasium as an example, but I think what you'd find from principals is that they would see that there are some classes that, where you could get more kids in, but then you're, you're getting to the place of wanting to make sure that it's the ones that want to come in, because there are those who, among secondary parents, that you would want to be those that are motivated to come in more frequently, and then you've got to decide in that one school who, who can and who can't. And that, that can be controversial too. We have parents that are watching, well, if you let, you know, if you, if you're able to bring in another 57, how are you going to determine which 57 can come in?
Yeah, the granularity would be at the school level. You're not going to start doing that grade by grade. So I would just ask if, if there's X, if there's, if there's physical space in a Moore County school that would allow 6 through 8th grade to spread out and go to Plan A for that school, it should be looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Levy?
Yes. First of all, Dr. Locklear, I want to congratulate you and your staff for doing what I know a lot of the voters wanted to be done, and that is to move as quickly as possible as we can to, to face-to-face Plan A education. However, I have gotten some inquiries from some people based on the uptick, which is very recent, since the November 13th survey with respect to, to COVID cases. And they're, they're asking whether they can move from, from face-to-face back to Connect Academy before the January 5th date. Is that feasible?
No, sir, it's not. That's why we, we had to have a, a time that we, we, we set a deadline for enrollment, and that's, and we ran that for two weeks, and we, we worked very hard to make that very clear. And unless there's some unique and extenuating medical circumstance, that, that's, we're unable to do that because we had to plan, our entire, our staffs had to plan the whole second semester, the staffing, the scheduling, based on the enrollment and enrollment process. So unfortunately, we're not able to do that. No, sir.
And you also say that within three weeks of the governor giving is okay, we can get to Plan A for 6 through 12, or 6 through 12, right?
Yes, sir. And that, that, part of that time is, is notifying, transportation routing, making sure all that's in place, making sure our logistical processes are ready at the school level. So that's making sure we have time to do that.
My inquiry, I guess, is to the superintendent. Would we need a board meeting to do that, or is that something that can simply be done by the superintendent?
It would need to be authorized by the school board to do that, but I, I think that can be done. I don't think I anticipate the governor ordering that for January, maybe not as early as February. We've been thinking that it would be more like a February, March, April window at that point, and you all can certainly modify that, and I'd appreciate having that opportunity because then we could move more quickly. Or we could have a called board meeting, and I'm sure this board would, would act on that. So there's, there's a couple of different ways to approach that, Mr. Levy, and, and I'm very open to doing it that way, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. [inaudible].
If I could, Mr. Levy, Madam Chair, with your permission, I want to take this opportunity. I'm glad you brought up that question because we do have some parents that are concerned. This isn't the first time that I've heard about parents who've been watching the media reports and seeing the reality of what's happening across the country. Let me offer this, just to offer some assurance. We do track this data very carefully, and we had a unique opportunity in the aftermath of Halloween to see how this works. We saw a spike in our absences related to quarantines among students. If you go out about, to about Veterans Day, about a week after Halloween, we went in about a six-day period of time to 46 student absences, to 118 student absences over about a five-day period of time that were all related to students being quarantined because they had been exposed to somebody who had been tested positive. But the number of infections among our students went up very modestly during that time. What that tells us is that the, the impact was related to effects outside of school, not inside of school. Now we're seeing the same thing with Thanksgiving. The increase in our quarantines in the last about five days has increased much more appreciably than the number of infections. The number of infections have gone up, but very modestly, and certainly not near what they were in late August and early September. So one, one assurance that I'd like to offer to the public is that actually, and this, ironically, this gets to the Wednesday issue too. The thing we find is the more the children are in school, the less they're getting sick. And so because we're so determined to follow our rules with masks, disinfecting, and cleaning, and social distancing and whatnot, we actually really have bucked the trends that we see in the broader community on that, and a lot of people get credit for that. But I think it was just a good opportunity to point out that really it's a positive thing that we're trying to keep school open during this time because really it, it's one of the places where they're least likely to get infected from what we've seen.
I appreciate that. I think that's good information for the public.
And you'll be getting that every week. You'll, you'll be able to track that yourselves. All right, other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Holmes.
So Dr. Locklear, I know, can you just explain and give the public some piece about what additional steps that you're taking in order, because you've already mentioned that social distancing, the classrooms are going to be limited. Are there any other additional steps that you're taking?
Our, our teachers and our custodial staff will continue to be doing the disinfecting. We have systems and processes set up at this point. We have hand sanitizers in every classroom to be used.
So pretty much the same?
Pretty much the same disinfecting processes that we're using now. And as Dr. Grammacy noted, you know, we call it doubling down on mask wearing, making sure that we're doing that, and, and that's, that's really the number one thing that our, our partners in the health department note that is very critical for us to continue to work with, continue to support our students doing and our staff doing is the mask wearing.
Okay. I remember too that you had made mention about testing all of the students all at once that would come into school. Didn't you mention that?
Yes, sir. The daily health screenings where they're, where they're coming out of carpool, they're coming out of their buses, and we're, we're taking their temperatures, we're asking them the COVID-related questions, much like folks who came into tonight's meeting was, were asked, and that's a process that our schools have set up currently under Plan B, but certainly got to think through. Now we've got twice as many, if not a little more.
So that's going to put a little strain, right? Have you thought about staggered entry or anything like that as far as?
Some of our schools have talked about doing some specific staggered entry with carpool, doing some different, and trying some different things around that. So our principals are working on that and thinking about the best way to handle that. Some of our, from some of our schools have done a phenomenal, all of our schools have done a phenomenal, but some of them have been able to take care of carpool in as little as 15, 20 minutes as they've refined it over time. First day of school this year didn't look like that, but they had to refine it, step back, okay, what else can we do? And so I expect our schools will learn, you know, January 5th, they'll learn something. January 6th, it'll be even a little better, and January 7th, it'll be even better. So I expect there'll be some learning from experience as well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Locklear, I know during this first semester, we've had elementary teachers dealing with as many as 32 children, 17 one day, 15 in Cohort B, and now these 32, I am assuming will be brought together into that one classroom. How many incredibly large classrooms like that do we anticipate putting back together? Do you have a, a number or an estimate as to how many will be over, say, 25 students?
I would, and so I won't test, won't give you wrong information. I'd have to research that and get that information to you, but we do have some classrooms that are 32 approximately in 4th and 5th grade that will be coming back together in school districts. I, I do not want to give you a wrong number of the number of those that we have, but I can get that information for you.
Well, I know we've had a tremendous number throughout the county in, in previous years, so I'm sure that we will have some. And thank goodness we have some relatively large classrooms that maybe will accommodate those groups, and I know teachers will continue to do their very best to keep children distanced as much as possible.
Yes, ma'am, and there's requirements that they're, they're forward-facing, you know, you don't have the different desk arrangements that we would normally have in the classroom. They're forward-facing, and you're trying to space them out as best possible.
All those cute little clusters that we used to do with face-to-face learning, yeah.
Exactly, collaborative groups, that is a best practice, but unfortunately, we can't do it during, during these guidelines and COVID.
Are there other questions for Dr. Locklear?
Just one. Are there a group of teachers who are seeking out Connect Academy because they're concerned about teaching in, in face-to-face?
We did have some students, teachers who requested the being able to teach virtual because of medical concerns.
Are you giving, are you giving preference to those teachers who might have comorbidities or something like that, if at all possible?
If at all possible.
There are other considerations?
Sure. If at all possible, we've tried to consider that as we staff the Connect Academy. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, then we can move on. Thank you very much, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission?
Let's move on.
For item 6C, I'll call Dr. Seth Powers forward.
Thank you, Dr. Grammacy, Madam Chair, members of the board. I've come to you this evening to request that you endorse the purchase of a new activity bus. Moore County Schools currently has an Moore County Schools currently has an aging fleet of 22 activity buses, with the last new buses purchased in 2011. The oldest bus still in use is a 1984 model, and five buses are from the 1990s. Four buses are from 2001 to 2004. Six are from 2004 to 2006, and eight are from 2008 to 2011. Activity buses are assigned to all middle and high schools to support athletic, extracurricular, and field trip travel. Each middle school has one activity bus per school, and the high schools have multiple buses. Northmore and Union Pines have four buses each. Pinecrest has five buses. Two buses are currently used as spares. The funds for purchasing the new bus would come from military impact aid funding. Approximately $22,000 would come from 2019-20 impact aid, and the remaining $73,000 would come from impact aid fund balance accrued by the district in past years through our effective applying for and receiving funding. Although there are no specific criteria for use of impact aid funding, the purchase of an activity bus would be an appropriate use of these funds, as military-connected children tend to be very involved in athletics and extracurricular activities. If purchased, the new activity bus would be assigned to Pinecrest High School to replace a 2001 model bus, which is currently the oldest bus servicing a high school. The 2001 bus would then be moved to replace the worst bus in the fleet, and that bus would subsequently be moved to be housed in transportation and used as a spare. Our Transportation Department received quotes from Bluebird and Carolina Thomas, with Bluebird providing the best price of $95,156. The new bus has a Cummins diesel engine, seats 72 passengers, has air conditioning, interior racks, underbody luggage storage, and a backup camera. The base warranty for the bus is five years with no odometer limit. The normal lifespan for a new activity bus is 12 to 15 years or 250,000 miles, and the bus is currently on a lot and can be delivered within seven to 14 days upon approval for purchase. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
And other questions?
Seth, just, you might clarify for the public, the state requirements for our yellow buses, that they are not allowed to be used for extracurricular activities.
And my specialty is not operations or transportation, but you are correct, Mr. Dennison. Yellow buses are not to be used as activity buses and cannot travel for field trips outside of the county. There you go.
If I could chime in here, I reached out to Tom McGinnis, Senator McGinnis, who referred me to this North Carolina Senate President who sent me to his education advisor, because I became concerned about this last week. That's not true, according to the North Carolina Department of Education. Yellow school buses can be used without restrictions for activities as long as the school district reimburses the state for the operational cost.
And again, right, and again, operations is not my forte, but I can certainly refer to Mr. Barath.
Obviously, a couple of follow-on questions, and we can...
I can chime in on that briefly. There are statutory restrictions on the use of yellow school buses. They're set out statute. I'd be happy to provide that information to the board. It's kind of hard to summarize, and I might forget some of the reasons, but there are certain permissible uses that it's limited by statute.
We'll wait on Mr. Barath to get himself set up. I know he's done some research on the use of yellow buses.
Make sure, yes, okay. And that's a good question. It's been a question that's been posed previously and from NCDPI's Transportation Services. The school buses may be used for other uses that serve the instructional purposes of the school.
Correct.
So it also goes out of the way to say that activity buses are primarily used to transport for participation in extracurricular. So the use of the yellow buses, according to NCDPI, is restricted to only that that is related directly to instructional purposes. In other words, you can use a yellow bus for a field trip to the courthouse, to the State Capitol, to those type of things that continue the instructional of the students. The activity buses must be used for extracurriculars such as athletics, clubs, those type of activities.
Just as a general matter, there are separate statutes restricting the permissible uses of both yellow school buses and activity buses. Again, without looking through the statutes, I hate to paraphrase it, paraphrase it, miss something, but we can certainly get the board that information.
Yeah, so there's a bit of, I can't think of the word, there's a bit of unclarity, lack of clarity. So I have a couple of questions. Right, so what is our, what is a Moore County school's per mile standard operating cost for yellow buses?
The Moore County operational, I don't have that number, Tom, but I do know the state reimbursement requirement rate.
Okay, that's, what is that?
Would that be sufficient? Okay, the state reimbursement rate excluding the driver is $1.68 a mile.
Okay, so here's my question, because, here's my question. Does that, is our cost for a bus, so that $1.68 a mile is, my understanding, is based upon our maintenance cost, and it varies by LEA. So Wake County has a higher one if they have higher labor costs. So that cost is our cost to maintain the state buses. So here's my question. Would that cost vary between, that cost to maintain the state buses and operate the state bus, would that vary between a yellow bus and an activity bus? Or would it be, it seems to me to be the same cost per mile?
It might fluctuate some only because the yellow buses do drive more frequently than the activity buses and have more mileage on them typically than the white activity buses would. So that may, you see some fluctuation. On average, our expenses on activity buses, I'm going to give you, if you don't mind, just a general ballpark, it seems to range from our last count, I wrote it down, so I just want to say it right, approximately $2,000 to $3,000 per year per bus in maintenance. And that's for the activity buses, because every time our mechanic goes out to inspect the activity bus, that mechanic's time has to be paid back by local to the state. So all those costs associated with that, changing the oil, the brakes, whatever maintenance needs to be done, a seat cover, those are things that are paid for the local on the activity bus.
Yeah.
And so general is in that $2,000 to $3,000 range. Obviously, a new bus won't have as much needs until it gets older and you have more, just like you would with your vehicles, some larger items you have to replace.
I mean, I'm not anti-activities, right? I'm not anti-activity buses, but it seems to me that there's an analysis that we could get the bus for free and just pay the reimbursement rate for the government, and then we'd take this $100,000, and we could get two SROs, which would be permissible use for the federal military aid funds. So, you know, I dug into this a bit, and I got to thinking, someone needs to sit down and do the math, and if the operational costs are the same, then if you use a yellow bus, you get the bus for free.
Mr. Barath, I believe I read in some of the notes that yellow buses cannot be used for athletics.
That's correct.
I will have to confirm that, but it means that you cannot put your football team on a yellow bus.
What was the source of that information again, Mr. Hansley?
It was, it was, it was Eric Nesbit, who's the education policy person for the Senate, North Carolina Senate President.
Senator Berger's office?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we follow up with that? Can John follow up with that?
Yeah, yeah. I just, you know, $100,000 unplanned expense, I mean, that's another question. Why aren't these budgeted for? But anyway, it just seems, if we could use a yellow activity bus and maybe push the envelope a bit, there's a bit, appears to be a bit of a gray area, redefine what's instructional, you know, maybe athletics isn't, but a field trip to Raleigh to see the, you know, might, you know, see an art museum might be instructional.
Right. I would suggest that it's a gray area that exists across the state, that we're not alone in our interpretation, that we cannot use yellow buses to transport extracurricular teams. So we would need to get that clarity, work that through with whatever source that is. This is a unique read on that requirement. It's always been my understanding, I've heard other superintendents complaining that they can't use yellow school buses. I'm one of them because I was previously in a state where we didn't have to have separate activity buses. We just had the freedom to make that choice. If that choice is available, then the extra analysis is warranted. If it's not available, then it's not, you know, it's not a good use of staff time if there's nothing we can do about it. But I do want to get it cleared up. If there's a source there, we'd like to know what his source is that seems to run counter to what conventional wisdom has been among my colleagues. So we can look up on that. Did you get the name?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Mike? Oh, sorry.
If you could share your email, Mr. Hansley? Yeah, we could follow up on that. Yep.
All right, Mr. Levy.
Yes, thank you. My concern is a budgetary concern. Clearly, we knew at the beginning of the budgeting process that there would be a need for an activity bus, and there's a need for other repairs and the like. I need to know why this wasn't budgeted in. Number two, it seems to me that I remember from the budgeting process the words that we have no fund balance. And yet, I understand that we're taking this from military impact aid, which, and the fund balance in military impact aid. I'm trying to get a grip on the budgeting process, especially since we have, what was the number? I think you said, Mr. Barath, $90 million in deferred maintenance for our various schools, especially in the northern part of the county. I really, I believe Pinecrest certainly needs a new bus, but there may also be a roof which is needed on one of the schools, maybe Carthage Elementary, something, some other school. And these things, shouldn't these things be budgeted in at the beginning of the year and then planned out rather than in the middle of the year upsetting the budget? I don't understand.
Let me respond first to that, and then I'll have to defer to the chair because ultimately, the decisions about the final budget that the school board sends to the commissioners is one that the chair and those board members who made those decisions would have to answer for, because the needs exceed the revenue every year and those decisions. And we can't relitigate the whole budget process tonight. That'll be something you can do in the next budget process. What I can tell you with federal impact aid funds, you'll get a report, if not in January, you'll get that by February, of what that revenue stream has been on an annual basis, and it has been improving every year over the last three or four years after it hit, it bottomed out about five years ago. And that is a direct result of our military families taking very seriously the process, working with Rowley Sampson, and that's a real testimony to our community. Our military community has really stepped up, and we've done that. But the pace of those revenues has exceeded every year what that budget has been. And so when we say that there is no fund balance, we're referring specifically to the Fund II balance, not Fund VIII where the impact aid money resides. And that's a whole technical other explanation that you'll be getting here as we get into the budget process, and you'll have command of that within a couple of months.
Well, my concern is the term "fund balance" was used for a long time, as there was, what Mr. Pacino used to get upset, because there was a certain amount of money which was set aside every year, I guess, as an emergency fund, you know, rainy day fund.
2012, it was $12 million.
Right. And that has dwindled down, and it's been reported that it's zero, but now I see it's at least $73,000. And the other thing is, why in the middle of the year are we all of a sudden buying an activity bus?
We're not buying it. We're offering that based on this unanticipated increase in revenue we got by the end of the year that was made clear in our end-of-year audit. We found that these funds were, we could certify that these funds were available prior to that time. This is one-time money that's available, assuming that this revenue stream persists. If the board chooses not to do that and to defer it into the next budget process so we can make that part of that thoughtful deliberation, it's the board's prerogative to do so.
If this is found money, okay, then I want to know what is the highest priority of repair in the schools? And it may be an activity bus. I don't know, okay? But I want to find out what the highest priority is, and then use whatever audited funds we have for those highest priorities. I mean, Mr. Barath, is a new bus the highest priority of the maintenance?
Well, that these funds could be used for would be a condition, I think. I'd have to say that at this point, if the board has that same concern, the board can vote this down now and defer it to a later time. What we've observed is that the question of activity buses in the host of priorities from year to year has not ever gotten to the point of being competitive with other priorities, but we can't continue to go on forever. So at this point, given that our year-end audit is to the place where Mr. Cox, the Executive Officer for Budget and Finance, is confident that this level of money is available, it's a rare opportunity to address an activity bus shortage that we have on hand. Should the board decide to defer, then we'll just continue to do things that have been inconvenient for students, student athletes, where sometimes they've got to double up on activity buses. Buses break down, we have to send buses out to get them. The signs continue to increase year by year that this need is getting to a point where the board's going to have to give it a higher priority than we have in the past.
I don't doubt that there's a need, and I don't doubt that there's an excruciating need. But one of the problems is I don't want to see a need in a vacuum. In other words, I need to see the needs with respect to the other needs. Maybe this is the highest priority, right now, maybe it is. But just the case that you need an activity bus and you have the money for an activity bus doesn't necessarily say that this is the highest priority in terms of maintenance. Perhaps Mr. Barath ought to get us lists of high, I mean, we've got a list of maintenance, but maybe we need to get a list in order of priority.
That list does exist. That list does exist. Not all those items are appropriately applied to federal impact aid revenues, that what we try to do with that money is tie it as directly as we can to those areas that are of greatest interest and greatest contribution to the involvement of our military-connected families. This is one that we felt applied. This was an idea that we've brought. I don't mind recommending it, but if this board decides that it wants to take a more universal approach to this and a much more deep dive before you make a decision on a single activity bus, that's the board's prerogative. But I stand by the recommendation. I feel confident that this is a priority, that it's a good use of these one-time revenues from this particular source, and happy to let the board debate about it and still be friends if the board wants to put it off for a few months. But I think it'd be helpful for our student athletes if we could make this contribution to our activity bus fleet.
And one other thing, is this proposal with seat belts for the buses? Or is that extra? Because the National Transportation Safety Board recommends seat belt use in buses and has since 2018 with the crash of a case in Baltimore.
I can answer the question that it does not.
It does not.
No, it does not include those, and Mr., at some other point in time, this can be debated, but there also are recommendations that I've been exposed to, I don't know if DPI has put this out, that bus evacuation is so critical and that in cases, sometimes seat belts can be an impediment to bus evacuation in some types of bus accidents, which we would need to evaluate. Does DPI opine on bus seat belts?
At this time, they do not require them to be placed in their new buses or any buses that they have. As a reminder, the state does replace our yellow buses after they reach a certain mileage or years of use, and the buses they purchase to give to the school districts they use do not have seat belts.
But the National Transportation Safety Administration, NITSA, does recommend that, am I correct?
I am not familiar with that study.
We depend on DPI for our specifications.
Well, I understand, I understand, and I'm also looking at the possibility, and I hope it never happens, I hope it never happens, but if someone gets hurt and there is litigation, it would be negligent on our part not to prove... But if someone gets hurt and there is litigation, it would be negligent on our part not to provide restraints on buses if the National Transportation Safety Board especially recommends it. And by the way, I, I have looked that up. And since 2018, there is a directive by the National Transportation Safety Board for restraints on all, at least all new buses. My concern, my concern is for the safety of the children.
Which, which we share, we all share.
No, no, I, I understand that, and I, I mean, all of us know that if we don't put our kids in restraints in the cars, that we're going to not only get a ticket, but sometimes you can get your kids taken away from you in an extreme accident. Yet, the law of physics still applies to cars as to, as to buses, so that concerns me, concerns me a lot. Okay. Just thought I'd.
And we have legal counsel for that, that we can defer to as well, to advise us at, at the appropriate time as to weather. But Madam Chair.
Before we move on, I want to respond to a little bit of your question about fund balance and the use of that term. What you're going to see many times in the course of school budgeting is that funds that we receive for a particular item are not large enough to cover a particular item, such as the lottery funds that we receive from the state each year, which are, are of a very nice contribution from the lottery, however, may not be in, at say, $850,000, which is about the average of what we get, is not enough to put a new roof on Pinecrest High School. So knowing that a new roof is going to be needed, those funds are banked until the next year when additional lottery funds come in, and technically, you have a fund balance, because you are saving one year's funds to add to the next year's funds. And so what you're seeing here with the Impact Aid Fund is not true fund balance, it's, it's monies that were accrued because there was good collection in previous years, knowing that when the amount was large enough, it could be used for a major purchase, or major employment, or, you know, the addition of an SRO, or whatever it might be. But that, but, but these are not funds that are going to routinely reoccur.
My, my concern is I didn't see the fund balance in the budget, and that was concerning to me.
Okay. There's, there's the budget, I said, there's the balance that is maintained, which enables us to offset delayed payments from the federal government or the state government to cover expenses that the district goes on and incurs. But as, as fund balance in the way that used to be at the $12 million fund balance, that is no longer. And so only do our Fund II, where we maintain enough money to cover charges that might come in outside of, of payments being received, we do not maintain a fund balance.
Okay. And we're going to get really into that in January. All right, are there other questions about, or?
I just have one question. With the pooling of the old 2001 bus set, is it in any type of condition to where we possibly could take the 1992 bus out of service at West Pine Middle and put the 2001 bus there instead of just parking it? I mean.
No, that's the plan. The plan is that we would take the 2001 bus, and then it would be used to move and replace whatever the worst bus in the fleet might be.
Okay.
I'm not sure which one that might be. Like, yeah, likely, it's probably the oldest bus.
Okay.
But that's what we would do.
So we just.
And then that oldest bus would be moved and housed to transportation to possibly be used as a, a spare in the, in the case of a breakdown or a need, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you've not been on an activity bus in years, I invite you to take a trip.
They're gross. They're very gross.
It is a.
You don't want to do it.
It is a tight method of travel, and we know that multiple children are required to sit on one seat, and, and they are really squeezed in. An additional padding that was added between seats has cut into the legroom quite a bit. So it is what it is. Still big old buses. All right, Dr. Grimace, let us move on to the next item.
Yes, ma'am. For Item 6D, I'll invite Mr. Cox to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimace. Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the last two years, classified employees in the state of North Carolina have not received a pay increase from the state, while certified staff have received salary step increases each year. In fiscal year '21, North Carolina General Assembly, in addition to providing the salary step increases for those certified personnel, also approved a bonus of $350 for all school-based certified teachers and certified instructional support personnel. However, they did not provide a bonus or salary increase for classified employees. While Moore County has advocated for additional local funding to implement a classified salary schedule, no additional funding has been provided to sustain such a schedule. Staff has identified revenue available through the Federal CARES Act to fund a proposal for a one-time $200 bonus for all classified staff employed as of December 1, 2020. This will be payable during the January payroll. While this is a small gesture, it recognizes the hard work of the classified staff due for the district and enables us to express our gratitude. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Mr. Cox?
I just have, if you just want to go in, since we do have some new board members, just to let them know what, who would be getting it? Would it be custodians? What classified staff?
Custodians, maintenance personnel, types of employees like that.
Lunchroom people, bus drivers, maintenance.
Right. And we have, we have approximately about 550 of those employees that would be eligible to receive it.
And someone doing that jazz hands in the way back is one of those?
Data managers, bookkeepers, office support personnel.
Would it be easier to answer the question, who would not get it?
Yeah.
Teachers and instructional support, school-based administrators.
That's about it.
That's about it.
Right.
Everybody else would get it.
Right.
Mr. Cox, how many classified staff did you say, did you say?
There's approximately about 550 that would be eligible for it.
Was there a cap on the money that could be given?
Well, we've identified a maximum of about $150,000 of the CARES Act funding.
And their executive summary estimates it should not exceed $150,000. Since these are the folks that have actually gone out of their comfort zones so many times during the COVID crisis, it appears to be a very good use of some of the money.
Yes, ma'am, exactly.
That, these are our bus drivers who are dealing with potentially sick children, often on the bus, with our lunchroom workers who are making extra lunches all summer long, with our receptionists and assistant principals, well, not assistant principals, our receptionists and bookkeepers who are dealing with sick children when they get sent to the office on a day when there is no nurse. These are our frontline workers.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish it could be more. Did the Board approve a supplemental CARES Act budget, or was there some action of the Board that, that established a budget for how the CARES Act money is used?
Uh, no, no, sir. They just approved the $1.8 million of the CARES Act funding in the budget.
Okay. And at what point has the Board discussed how that $1.8 million would be used?
So we've, we've have talked about using, well, they did approve in that initial budget, we're using approximately $1 million to fund personnel for this year out of that $1.8 million, and we were deferring approximately $800,000 of that to next year. This will cut into that amount deferred that we will be able to carry over for next year in order to set us up when kids come back and reduce revenues based on ADM from the state. So we'll cut into a little bit of that that'll help us not have as much of a potential budget deficit next year, but still, like Chair Carter said, it'll well worth an appreciation for the hard work they do, the frontline employees there.
Getting back to Mr. Holmes's question, if you're only taking 150 out of, out of, what, 800,000, why only 150? Why not more? What, why, why is that money being carried over? Just, just the brief, for those that weren't here when those discussions were had, explain why not more?
Well, as I said, you know, we're, we're expecting more students to come back. Our revenues are going to be decreased next year, so that money will allow us to continue to maintain the same levels of service we had this year when our revenues are cut next year, because as, we're funded based on ADM, and our ADM this year, because of COVID, has decreased, and DPI funds us based on the prior year's ADM numbers. So that, that level will go down some, so we'll have a decrease in revenue, so we need some additional revenue in order to maintain the level of service for the students that we will have.
Does that help, Mr. Holmes? Okay, are there other questions for Mr. Cox?
I have three questions.
Okay.
So my first question is, what, approximate, and these are approximates, right? Approximately what percentage of the classified staff is funded by the state?
What, what percent of?
The classified staff is funded by the state vice-county funding.
What percentage of our classified employees are funded by the state?
Yes, sir. Percentage? 75%? 80%? And 20% by the county?
Approximate.
Yeah, approximate's fine.
I don't want to give you incorrect number. I'd have to look at it and see.
Do you know the approximate total payroll of the classified staff, annual payroll?
I don't, not off the top of my head.
Okay. And so my, my last question is, is my understanding, there's a lot of, or there's some classified staff vacancies, and I assume that there's a vacancy that that, that person was budgeted for, and if there's vacancies in the classified staff, where does that money go?
So, well, we're funded, classified staff is paid, state is paid from 003. It's a PRC, it's a special code only for that type of employees, so it would have to fund those type of employees only.
So if there's an empty, so if there's an empty classified staff bill at the state, you don't get paid by the state, so that money doesn't exist?
No, so the state gives you the money, so if we budgeted some in local that carries over, because there's not enough money in, in that specific PRC to pay for all the classified staff. So some portion has to carry over into local funds, and I don't know that exact, exact amount. I want to say we spend about $4 million on classified personnel out of local each year. So if a position is vacant, we don't have to use that state money, it frees up that local money that we're able to do for something else. And depending on how, we're constantly bringing budget amendments to you, as you'll see, shifting money around for the priorities of the district, and so that would free up money in local that we'd be able to use for another purpose.
Yeah, I guess my question will be, and I'll follow up on this during the week, is what that other purpose is? You know, if, if a bill is empty, then where does that money go and what's it being used for?
Right, yeah, and it would depend on, you know, the Board's priorities.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Let me ask, perhaps, you know, perhaps you don't. What would be the cost of, say, a 10% raise for the classified staff?
Well, that's what I was getting at, asking the total payroll.
Yeah.
Without asking it.
Yeah, I don't have a total payroll classified staff. I, I can get that information, get it back to you, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
These are questions that'll be part of the normal budget development process that we start in January. They're good questions, but we're a little premature right now.
Well, the reason I'm asking them now is because there's a, there's a, there's a motion out to, or a proposal to do a bonus, so, you know, why 200? Why not 350, which is what they gave the classified, or the, the certified staff? You know, why not? I, I think we need to explore other, more generous options, is, is what I'm getting at. I, I, I think it's unsatisfactory to give classified staff $200 when the certified staff got 350, as an example.
Right. Understand, state paid for that, $350. We're having to use other sources of funding for classified staff as well. But I agree, I would like to do more for them.
We might ask that same question. Why did the state not give a salary increase to classified?
Oh, yeah, no, there's a whole question there, too, but that.
Because they have definitely been overlooked.
I'm, I'm quite interested in getting a raise to that classified staff.
We support that.
We have asked the county commissioners as well, several times, I think three years now.
Three years in a row.
And they've denied us each time for a raise just for them.
Right. And that's why I asked, what percentage of our classified staff is funded by the state? Because once I get that number, I'll make some phone calls.
Yeah, and I'll get that information for you.
Yeah, it's unsatisfactory, the state hasn't given raises.
All right, I think we probably need to move on. Other, any other questions for Mr. Cox at this point? And I'll go ahead and mention, if you, if you sense that you're going to have a question on one of the executive summaries that requires a specific answer, if you will get it to the appropriate senior staff member in advance, he'll have those numbers ready to share with you that night, if you know that, that you're thinking ahead to that. And if you'll copy me and, and to Dr. Grimace as well, we'll ensure that that information is available for you, so that Mr. Cox won't have to continually be getting back to you. So if you can plan us a little in advance, that will help us all. All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Do we need, what time is it now? Do we need to take a quick break, or?
It's been almost there.
Do, would anyone go for a five-minute break?
Yes.
All right, let us take a five-minute recess, and let's get back very quickly. I have eight o'clock on my watch, at 8:05 we will.
Not to sell it, but to lease it. Or simply to do nothing with it because this property will likely, I assume, become much more valuable. Not only that, but when we have to build new schools, we're going to be going around searching for property. It seems to me to be unwise, to say the least, to be selling property. And what is this offer? Two hundred thousand dollars or something? Am I correct?
That's two hundred thousand is what they have offered.
So for two hundred thousand and the appraised value is six hundred thousand. Am I correct?
Over six hundred thousand, approximately six hundred and thirty.
Six hundred and thirty thousand. So we're selling it at a bargain basement price. We may need property in the future. We probably could lease the property. So I would ask that you would look at the possibility of putting this up for lease instead of purchase. And I don't know whether that takes another resolution of the board because you did declare it to be surplus property. I've let it be well known that I'm very concerned about giving away such valuable property, especially since the citizens of Moore County and even especially the citizens of Western Pines put this aside as school property. And it would be a good thing for us to use it, especially in the future, to educate our children.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley, did you have comments?
I have a presentation.
All right. You've got to make it really fast.
I'll talk quickly. I'll talk quickly.
Otherwise, we're going to be here until midnight.
No, that's okay.
So it's good to know that you have prepared.
Okay, so real quick. Should be coming up here. Yeah, the next slide, please. Thank you. So these are my criteria. We all have a fiduciary responsibility to a free public, quality, free public education to the children of Moore County. That's our fiduciary duty. My criteria for selling property is one of three things. We maximize the sale price of the property so that we can take that money and reinvest it in the public education of our children. Or number two, we make sure that that property is used in perpetuity. Thank you, Jeff. For the free public education of our children. Or the best of both worlds is we get both. Right? So next slide, please. So if you look at the Southern Pines primary site, the total site is 16 acres plus or minus. You see it up there. There's a lot across Indiana Avenue and then there's a cemetery on the north corner. That's the total site in yellow. Next slide, please. So the original four acre site that was deeded to the, that was given, donated or whatever, the 1924 deed, and I want to make sure that the Moore County public understands this. The original 1924 deed that we'll talk about in a minute is that four acre site on the east corner. Right? And that is actually an auditorium, half a gym, and about five eight of, or seven eight of an administrative building. That is the original 1924 deeded site. Next slide, please. So the next thing I want to talk about or show everyone before we go into discussion is the old school site and the new Southern Pines Elementary School. That's approximately half a mile apart, maybe three quarters of a mile. That area, as you're leaving the new Southern Pines Elementary, that area is already undergoing rejuvenation. You can see it, how people are fixing up their houses, people are moving in. This whole area is going to undergo rejuvenation. That 16 acres, that's going to be the gateway to the $35 million school. That 16 acres is going to be worth a ton of money that could be sold at a future date to fund the education of our children. Next slide, please. So talk about the relevant statutes. School boards may enter into a private sale of historic properties. Note the word "may," not "will" or "shall." And then to the extent that the 1924 restrictive covenants on that four acres is enforceable, it would only be said land or profits and any wise ever arising therefrom in any manner shall be devoted to the use of negro, that's what's on the deed, education in and about the town of Southern Pines. I struck the word negro because per landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision, which everyone celebrated, struck down horrible race-based restrictive covenants. So that entire covenant may be stricken down, but certainly the word, the race-based part of it would be stricken down. The Southern Pine Land Trust's own plan shows retail theater or printing shop on the four acres, which violates the very covenants that they're trying to enforce. So it's not intellectually consistent with the covenants, the proposed use. Next slide, please. There's tons of other issues. I just want to hit the wave tops because I want to make sure everybody in Moore County understands what's happening. The conclusion, Article 9, Section 7 of the North Carolina Constitution prohibits school boards from donating or selling for less than its fair market value if property is used for anything other than public school purposes. Southern Pines Land Trust is not a public school. Southern Pines Land Trust is not a charter school. It is against the North Carolina Constitution for this school board to sell this property below market value to Southern Pines Land Trust. End of discussion. It's unconstitutional. And then finally, in conclusion, I told you I'd talk fast. With the completion of Southern Pines Elementary, the new $35 million school or whatever, that part of Southern Pines is already undergoing revitalization. I encourage people to drive out there and look. You can see it. It's starting from the school and it's moving towards Pennsylvania Avenue. In three to five years, that 16 acres, maybe not even that long, is going to be worth substantially more than its 600 and some odd thousand dollar appraised value. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. That was pretty quick. Are there questions or comments? Before we move on, Mr. Dennison, questions or comments on Mr. Hensley's presentation there?
I just, I have one question for counsel. And that is, has there, it's going to get, it's very wonky, but does the rule against perpetuities apply to deeds in North Carolina?
I would prefer to save attorney-client consultations on legal points like that for closed session if that's all right. It's an interesting question. I'd be happy to address it. I'm afraid that answering that question in this setting is, first of all, it's a rule against perpetuities, which is sort of a difficult rule. I'd like a little time to analyze it and consult with some colleagues. But if that's all right, I think that would be appropriate topic for closed session.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that was on somebody's mind.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Dennison.
Madam Chair, it appears that we definitely will like the superintendent's recommendation to delay decisions since we have a lot to talk about, which is requested in here, to make the decision to delay that at the next board meeting.
All right, are there other comments or questions?
I think there's been plenty of delays. I think the time is to make a decision next week. It's been delayed and it's been delayed and it's been delayed. You know, the people we're going to talk about next have been strung along forever. It's unconstitutional and I think that, you know, maybe we have two courses of action to consider next week. But I'd like to see one course of action that we're done. We terminate the private sale discussions with Southern Pines Land Trust and we look at other courses of action for this land.
I think, going back to Mr. Ramey, we had a resolution from the board some months ago in which we authorized the sale of these properties by upset bid if we did not do private negotiations. Would we need to go back and revisit that earlier resolution?
No, under that resolution, you're right, Madam Chair, the, if the trust meets all three conditions, the board said, the board didn't say that they would negotiate a price necessarily. I mean, the board would certainly could change gears. But under that resolution from December 2019, the board had said if the trust meets the three conditions, including payment of the $630,000 appraised value, the board will sell the site directly to the trust. Absent that, the same resolution says the board would use the upset bid process. So that upset bid process is the default if there's not a change in course. It seems at this point, based on the trust submissions, that they don't believe the $630,000 appraised value is fair or reasonable. They don't intend to pay it. That means the board has a range of options, as has been mentioned by some of the comments here. The board could hold on to the property, continue owning it, could explore other options, could, there are various options. But under the resolution, the status quo would be if those three conditions aren't met, the upset bid process would be used.
And the Southern Pines Land Trust is more than welcome to participate in upset bid process, just like anyone else, and buy it at its fair market value, which is actually determined by an upset bid process, not a private negotiated sale.
Okay. So the recommendation, you have a question?
No, I just, based on our discussions and the resolution that we have in place of looking at the upset bid process, that if we go that route, then that would give us an opportunity of Dr. Grimace to do the things that we would need to do as far as the right of way and the cemetery. And that way, at least, we have on the agenda what we need to do for next Monday.
All right, Mr. Hensley, would you like to make a recommendation that, so we can give specific wording to Dr. Grimace in a way to continue? Are we looking, we're going to proceed to, or through Ms. Thompson, proceed to move away from the private negotiations with the Southern Pines Land Trust since they've not been able to fulfill the three specifications that we had previously given them?
No, Madam Chair, if I may, it seems to me that there have been a number of suggestions. I don't know that we need, the board's not obviously taking action tonight.
Right.
The question on the table seems to be what should be brought back for the board for a week from today for some sort of action. And, you know, we've heard a wide range of options. I mean, one option for the board would just be to direct the superintendent's got a specific recommendation here that was based on some specific facts. We've now heard from Mr. Barath, there's new information from the trust that came to us on Sunday. The trust, you know, would be willing to, you know, not, would not be daunted by a couple of these conditions that appeared to staff and, you know, preparing for this, that there might be problems. So it's sort of changed the equation from their perspective. Other board members have mentioned other very different options, not involving the trust at all. So one option would be simply just direct the administration to come back with a range of options for the board. Just put everything on the table, including, you know, options that would result in the trust acquiring the site, options that would result in other outcomes, you know, rather than trying to sort it out now, it seems like.
All right.
We don't have a specific, you know, we have a specific recommendation. It may not be operative, may not be the best approach, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Grimace, but I'm sure he'd be willing to.
Then if you will come back to us next week with the assortment of recommendations that we can consider, whether it be a private sale, an upset bid, marketing, holding on to it, leasing it, what our actual options might be for the consideration of the Southern Pines Primary School property, then we will know how to proceed.
Does the board want me to come with a specific recommendation among those recommendations?
I think that we are looking for the opportunity to discuss, are we not?
Yes.
The options that are available. Is that correct?
I would like a recommendation, just to know your point of view. I would like that as a recommendation, to know what your thoughts are as well. But I also think, you know, David, you know, we can't keep kicking it down the road. I mean, it's going to be empty and we, I don't feel like paying for electricity and upkeep on a building that we're not using. So I do think we need to sell this property.
Make progress. Mr. Holmes, did you have a comment on that?
I did, but I just lost.
Anything else over here?
I would just tell you that one of those possibilities is a lease. Maybe it's feasible, maybe it's not, but I would ask the superintendent to explore that possibility.
What we could do, Mr. Levy, is bring that and then reflect on the information the board considered when they decided a year ago not to do that. So we could review that very, you know, and provide that information.
Okay. All right.
So to answer your question, Madam Chair, I believe that what we need are courses of action and then next week we can vote on the course of action that we're going to choose.
I was thinking something along that line. Courses of, you know, these are the courses of actions the board could consider and then you all could lock on to one. Far be it from me to recommend something that the majority doesn't want to do.
Well, I would like to see some facts and figures on the options that are available instead of just making a decision on the option. I want to know what each option would do for us.
And a lot of that we've reported previously, but it's worthy of a refresher. We could bring that back.
Anything else?
It's just a lot of paper.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so are we good that we will be expecting options from you such that we might evaluate each of those options?
Yes, ma'am.
And determine our course of action?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, let us move on now to the next piece of property.
Next item is the same topic regarding the old Southern Pines Elementary School. As was the introduction for the primary school, the same is true here. Back in October 2015, the reorganization, Master Facility Plan, 2016, June, the acquisition of the property in the August 10 meeting where the board considered to defer any decision of actions regarding an interest expressed by Moore Montessori Community School to the December work session. And again, just like the other, the summary and the attachments are very similar as far as the framework of them, where the executive summary provides a brief summary of the process available and what has been accomplished to date, whereas each of the attachments, again, they look very similar, but there's some differences in them because there's some different topics that came up regarding them, the legal parameters, and then the factual background and timeline. So to quickly go through this, the board had previously determined, as was alluded to here by Chair Carter in April 16, 2020 meeting, that a short or long-term lease would be economically and practically unfeasible and the reasons are listed therein. Moore Montessori also at that time confirmed that it would be willing to pay the appraised value of $1.08 million for the site as is. December 4, 2020, the board received a written notice that a private school, Thales Academy, has requested an opportunity to participate in a competitive process and has since submitted a letter stating that they are willing to pay up to $1.6 million upon a closing following a two-month due diligence period as is. Given the previous decisions about the lease being economically and practically unfeasible, there are, as outlined in the summary, three options provided to the board. The one being proceed as originally decided in the December 19, 2019 resolution and sell the site through the open competitive upset process. This permits any entities that are interested in the property to compete in the acquisition. Option two is to agree to sell the site to Moore Montessori for their appraised value offer of $1.08 million, with or without any additional conditions. And a third option is that we may negotiate a private sale of the site to Moore Montessori for an additional amount in excess of $1.08 million. The timeline and summaries attached provide some other context regarding this and how we got to where we are today and everything that happened up through, including a recent, sorry, pending decision regarding their appeal to the county commissioners to lease the property. And that appeal is currently on hold. So there's a lot of information in the attachment and with the dialogue, and it just as with the other, Dr. Grimace, Neil Ramey, and myself are here to answer any questions you may have. And just as with the primary, we are seeking direction from the board as to what options you would like us to bring to you next week.
If I could, Madam Chair, John, did you receive a set of packets from Thales Academy over the weekend?
I did receive their letter along with an explanation of what Thales Academy is, and I have copies here should anyone require.
From the chair.
Yeah. Do you have the copies for the board members?
Yes, I do.
I think we can distribute those then and they give members a chance to look at the letter.
Was there anything different from that information and what board members already received electronically?
I don't know what, what did they receive from?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the packets that came from Thales Academy?
Yes, I have those over there. Didn't know if you just wanted the cover letter.
Well, the cover letter, the cover letter will do.
Was there anything new in there that board members had not been provided with previously?
This, along with the description of what Thales, who Thales Academy is.
Okay, so there was new information there that board members should have and that Mary Kate should have, that we should make available on our website to anyone else. Okay, so when we're done, can you make sure everybody gets that?
Yes.
What you have?
Yep, I have it back there. I can right now give everybody a copy of the letter if they'd like to see it right now.
How about I do that and you answer the question?
Okay, I think as we begin, I'll go ahead and just remind the board that this property was also covered in the resolution in which we, the board went ahead and voted to entertain the upset bid process to actually sell the school, that we had no intention of becoming landlords and leasing property. Just with that preface so that we can then continue with discussion. Okay, so this letter from Thales was received on Saturday afternoon. Okay, are there questions, comments?
I have just a comment. And Mr. Levy, I know that you really want, you know, to look at these and lease, but I think the reason why we don't, A, we don't want to be landlords, but another reason that I can't justify is we just need the money. We don't have extra money and that money of, whether it's 1.08 or 1.6, I mean, it would do so much for all of our schools that are in need of a new roof or of windows or whatever, you know, our list says. That's where I'm coming from. I can't see leasing, you know, 500 bucks. I don't even know how much it would be. But, you know, I mean, the county commissioners could even say, you know, a dollar. I don't know. But I, that's my whole reason about, I just, I don't agree on the lease part. And we're not equipped to be landlords. I mean, John, you have enough on your plate. I'm sure you don't want to have to worry about being a landlord to schools as well. I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot of work.
The question really is, how much are you going to be paid to be a landlord? And so the answer to that is, well, if we're going to be paid just a few thousand dollars, well, that's one thing. But if we're going to need to expand schools, if we're going to need to have extra classroom space because Pine Crest is overflowing, we're going to need to find land. And that land will likely cost more, much more than $1.08 million. The buildings will likely cost much more than $1.08 million. If we can save 20 or 30 million dollars or the building of a new school, or let's say it'll cost us $5 million to rehabilitate a school and, but we don't have to buy the new school, we don't have to build the new school, we don't need the land, you know, we can save 20 million dollars. Is that, is that worth it to be a landlord? For sure. And I remember some discussion on the board where the board said, well, you know, in fact, I think it was maybe even Dr. Grimace who said, well, if you have a boiler that goes out, you don't want to have to replace it. Well, there's a thing called a triple net lease. And a triple net lease, they pay for the improvements. Your tenants pay for the improvements. What we want for the Southern Pine School especially is that it always be used as a school. I think, number one, the area around that school does not want to build condos and the like. Number two, we're expanding, this area is expanding exponentially. There are houses being built all the time and we're going to have to house students. And we're going to have to house students, in fact, in the Southern Pines area as well as in the northern part of the district. So we have to think ahead and we sometimes have to maybe even think 20 or 30 years ahead. And one of the good things is that I understand that the Montessori School is thinking about wanting to lease it. And they went to the county commissioners and they said, we're going to lease, we want to lease it. Well, now there's, I think they're pretty smart by saying they want to buy it because they know what a bargain it is to get 10 acres of land in the middle of downtown Southern Pine, some of the most valuable real estate, I think, in, maybe even in all of the southern part of the county for a million dollars. Knowing that a house of 5,000 square feet in Pinehurst is going to be $750,000. So they're getting one heck of a bargain and at the expense of the students. I don't want to give them that bargain. Yeah, he'll have to be a landlord. Yeah, we're going to have to pay him, you know, maybe we need to raise. I don't know. But, sure, maybe you'd agree with their motion, but, but only after we give the classified employees a raise. Okay? But the bottom line is that we need to maximize our ability to provide education for students, not only now, but 25, 50 years from now when we're long gone. And I just think that if they want a lease and we can give them a triple net lease, which means that they have to pay for all improvements, for sure, let's do it.
I don't believe right now is the time to sell real property, especially a very valuable piece of property. How many acres was it?
I believe it's 10. Am I correct, Mr. Barath?
Okay. It is more than 10 acres there by the shape. I don't have the exact number in my mind, but I think it might be 14. You were close.
14 acres, yeah.
And two, you know, the average house cost is, what, about 700 and some thousand for a house in that area? Would you agree? What is it?
We'd have to defer that one to our Realtor over here, but I don't think that the house in that neighborhood is going to run that.
No, it's, they go from 300 to 500,000. It just depends on where it is in Southern Pines.
Yeah, okay.
Two houses might run that.
Okay. Well, I just, I mean...
And you have to remember, a lot of their neighbors are actually an Episcopal church, a Presbyterian church, and a Baptist church.
Right.
On adjacent corners, so you don't have a lot of housing in that area.
They're not making land anymore, I don't think. And especially now during this pandemic, we don't need to look at doing anything right now. That's my opinion.
Well, I would say, you know, and this is my opinion only as well, is that we don't want to be sitting with empty property in Southern Pines in January and not have a plan of action to take care of this. Now, I am not in favor of leasing. I made that on the record previously when we voted to do upset bids because I do not think the schools need to be a landlord. I don't want to put the schools in a position of having to deal with a charter school that fails at some point or some other tenant, the town of Southern Pines, whatever it might be, who opt not to hold up their end of the bargain and we be faced with having to evict a tenant because in the court of public opinion, we will be found guilty. And I am not in favor of ever becoming a landlord because that is not our business. I think the one thing we have agreed on so far is that our business is the education of the children within the Moore County schools. And that's what needs to take our attention. Leasing property is not going to make that effective. So my opinion.
So Madam Chair, do we need to follow as we did with Southern Pines Primary and get some options provided on the best, on the next course and have those presented to include leasing, to include not doing anything at this point? Is that what I heard you say, Mr. Holmes?
We just, I prefer it if we just hang on just a second.
Just let it sit in?
I have a presentation with options.
Okay, well, we have options on the executive summary already. We have the options of proceeding into the upset bid process with selling it to Moore Montessori at 1.08 or negotiating a private sale with Moore Montessori. And of course, now we have the option of a $1.6 million bid from Thales Academy that would lead us to the upset bid process.
Madam Chair, I know that we do have that right now, but I think it would be worthwhile if we did entertain Mr. Hensley's presentation.
Are you fast again?
I'll talk fast. We're doing the people's business. We got a lot.
Okay, let's get to it.
Okay, so if you could pull up the Southern Pines Elementary, one please. Okay, so going back to the criteria for selling property, again, we either want to maximize the sales price for use for education or ensure that property is used in perpetuity for the free public education of our children, or the preferred action is both. In the case of Moore Montessori, the North Carolina Constitution and all applicable laws allow us to do both. allow us to do both. And again, I want to make sure everyone in Moore County understands what our options are and what the Constitution does and does not allow. I want to educate people. A school board, the Constitution, so applicable laws say a school board must lease a empty school to a charter school. There are some conditions on it, but basically must, not may or might must. Or, A, the North Carolina Constitution allows school boards to sell property below fair market value if used for free public school education. Moore Montessori, by virtue of it being a North Carolina charter school, meets the definition of free public school. So with Southern Pines Elementary, as you can see up there, Moore Montessori, the North Carolina laws and the North Carolina Constitution give us options that fulfill our fiduciary and legal responsibilities as a Moore County Board of Education. Next slide, please. So if you look at courses of action, look, we have an opportunity to get a three A or B rated school for 300 to 700 of our most needy students in Moore County. And there's a couple of courses of action that'll get us there. We could lease the property to Moore Montessori and it could be, it would have to be a long lease, a 30, 40, or 50 year zero dollar lease with it, and these are just suggestions, a 10-year base with 10-year extensions. And then you could put conditions on the lease such as, Moore Montessori must invest X millions of dollars in renovations and renovations are approved by Moore County School, those are called tenant improvements. The lease is a triple net, no expense to Moore County Schools. And a condition of the lease could be, Moore, Moore Montessori must maintain an A or B rating from the North Carolina Department of Instruction. The advantages of this, Moore County gets a free, free, can I say it again? Free, 300 initial seat capacity charter school with expansion to 700 capacity. The property remains in educational use and by virtue of it being a lease, 40, 50 years down the road, Moore County Schools has options on what to do with the land. Disadvantages to Ms. Caldwell's is there's no immediate cash flow. Course of action number two, next slide, please. The property sold to Moore Montessori. The sale price, you know, a million, the appraised price or higher. And then you could add the following restrictive covenants. You know, one that would, must be in there is the property must forever be used for free public education. And then we could entertain and negotiate other, other covenants such as, noneducational income must be used for renovations or maintenance. If the use changes in the future, then the property reverts back to Moore County Schools, because we want to make sure this property is used for free public education in perpetuity. Advantages, again, this should be bold and red and flashing. Moore County gets a free 700 capacity A or B rated school. It remains in educational use. Moore County School has some future options should the, should it, the use change, and you get immediate cash flow to, to Ms. Caldwell's concern. You know, disadvantage, the property's not guaranteed for future use of Moore County Schools. Course of action number three is, you know, many, several entities have now expressed interest in this property. You know, Moore Montessori, I believe, is initially interested in using the older L-shaped building. So perhaps, you know, Moore Montessori ends up with that. The May Street Building is sold at least to another party, maybe it's sold to Luddy's Organization, Thailey's Academy, or maybe it's used for Pinecrest Extension, or as overflow for Pinecrest. Auditorium and Gym, those would be great community, you know, they could be community property for those. And the Ballfields could be sold, leased, or kept by Moore County Schools. The point is, with Southern Pines Elementary, we have a unique opportunity to get a, again, a free A or B rated public school that will forever be used for the education of our children. Thank you.
Okay, that's pretty quick. All right, comments there or questions for Mr. Hensley? I think I have one. What kind of guarantee are you going to put that this is always going to be an A or B rated school?
Well, you, well, so when you lease it, you could make that a condition of the lease. And if, if they become a C rated school or a D rated school, then the lease is terminated. If you sell it, then you don't have that luxury, I don't believe. I mean, I don't think that would be a reasonable restrictive covenant.
It's, I'm not sure that I think that's something that I would want to place onto a school and/or want to have to deal with when they drop to a C. And based on one test, we tell them they no longer have a place to call home.
Well, it certainly, it would certainly put the pressure on them to be an A or B rated school, or they'd be homeless.
It would, and then maybe not a good pressure at that.
Or, or you could tell them that they, that it doesn't terminate the lease right after they become a C rated school. Give them a year or two.
That's what we've been saying, give us a year or two.
Well, so far you've had, wait a second, so far you've had four years with the D rated schools and they haven't come up. No more time.
All right, let's, well, we'll talk some more about that later.
Well, the point is.
The question, I think what it comes down to here, you make a very strong case for charter schools, getting a free A or B school. And I have to come back to the, to somewhat what Stacy or Ms. Caldwell has said, in that my first concern is not whether we have a free A or B charter school in Moore County. My first concern is the Moore County Schools and what we do for them. And if it means that we sell this property to the highest bidder to reinvest that money into the capital improvements that we need within our schools, then that's the route I want us to take.
So I have a slightly different view. My, my, I want to ensure free public education and the highest quality free public education for our children, whether that is Moore County Public Schools or Moore County Public Charter Schools. So I want to ensure that we have the highest quality edu, free education for our children. But, but anyway, to your point about A or B, you know, that's a detail. It could be A, B, or C, or it could be some other metrics, but my point is, we could put a performance clause in their lease, and if they don't meet that performance clause, then their lease is terminated at the next interval. It's, it's just not renewed, the option isn't renewed.
Now, it's a consideration, that's a consideration. Are there other questions or comments or instructions that we'd like to give?
Yeah, Olivia, I'd like to make one.
Mr. Henson?
We have to remember that this Board of Education is here to serve the students of Moore County School. That's our responsibility to do. Not, you know, not others. Charter schools are fine. Our responsibility is here, Moore County, Moore County Schools.
I guess back to Dr. Grimacy then. Are there other questions or, or comments? All right, so at this point, we are looking for direction to Dr. Grimacy for the December 14th meeting. We do have two interested buyers and we do have other options such as a lease. At this point, what sort of direction do you want to offer to Dr. Grimacy?
Well, I think the offers are on the table of what we want to do. I think just Monday, I guess as a group, we would decide of what we really want to do, seeing the presentation and seeing other people like, you know, talked about leasing and all that. I think we all know, I mean, he, you know, John did a great job putting out these, you know, three here. So I don't know if, to come back again, just to do more options would be irrelevant, because I think the options are laid out. I mean, he had a presentation of his, you know, those options, so.
All right, so we need a recommendation then if we just want one option?
So, so with regard to what we have here, at, at this point, I don't believe that the information that we received today, this evening from Thailey's Academy was included. We, we did not have that, correct, John?
That's correct. At the time we posted the agenda with the summary, that was forthcoming, but we did not have it in hand.
Okay. And, and I just want to make a comment that I know that our county commissioner, I believe, Madam Chair is, had talked about possibly allowing Montessori to lease. And I, I'm just reminded that whenever we presented our property to the county commissioners and, and of course, they, they reject it and, and then as we provided them with our resolution of how we would proceed with our surplus properties with the upset bid process, the county commissioners, and it's, and it's included in some of the attachment that John provided, that they were specific within that resolution to say that they wanted us to change wording for us to use the monies for capital outlay and maintenance expenditures that instead of can use dollars, they were specific that we will use dollars. So our, our goal has been to, to get and recoup through the upset bid to use those dollars and some of our long list of projects that we have. So as we're looking at, at the options, I would like to include the upset bid process.
Hey, Madam Chair, I, I agree with that. We do not have to accept upset bids. We can see what happens, but I.
That is true, that is true. In the upset bid process, confirm for me, Mr. Byer, John, excuse me. We, when we receive the upset bids, we have the opportunity to consider what they are, what the final bid is, and then to decide at that point whether we want to accept it and proceed with the sale.
That's correct.
We also can reject it and come back to a lease option or something else.
That is correct.
One thing I would add, just one comment, add to the upset bid process is, just like any other school, I believe Moore Montessori would have to plan for next, you know, the 2020, 2021 school year. And just like the Southern Pines Primary, this is drug on and drug on, the upset bid process is very tor, you know, it could last, it could last for months. And then they wouldn't have time to plan for their 2020, you know, they'd leave, they'd lose a window. So, you know, the, the timing of an upset bid and the timing of Moore Montessori being able to do something in the 2020, 2021 school year, I, I don't think there can grow it.
Well, that would be something they'd have to consider. I mean, we're making a mid-year move.
I'm sorry?
We're making a mid-year move and with the Southern Pines School Campus, I'm assuming other schools can do it as well, you know? All right, so would someone like to put a suggested motion for Dr. Grimacy to bring back to us next week?
Well, what Pam said.
I would, I would just like for us to follow what we did for Southern Pines Primary and come with a list of options. One was the lease, one was the upset bid process, and, and then what?
Private negotiations. Private negotiations, I think, was one of them.
The lease to Moore Montessori, a sell to Moore Montessori, and then just a sell to the highest bidder, whatever form that is, I think, are the three.
Okay, so it would mean that you would return to us with our options, which would be to proceed with the upset bid process, contacting these potential buyers to receive the, the first opening bid. It would be an option to agree to sell the site to Moore Montessori for 1.08 with, with or without conditions. It would be to negotiate a private sale of the site to Moore Montessori for some additional amount other than 1.08 million. And it would, we could to, to consider lease options if the school is, is held.
Specifically to Moore Montessori?
Yes.
And I do want to, I do want to indicate that my preference is to lease it, but if not lease it, I think it would be who of us to listen to Mr. Hensley and see if we can't get a free school for, for our students using Moore, using Moore Montessori. I think, I, you know, sometimes, sometimes, and this is, this is a problem. Sometimes we say there are Moore County students here and there are charter students here. No.
They're the same students.
All of these students are students of Moore County. And our job is to best educate all of the students of Moore County. And if we can avoid building a new school by getting a, a charter school to come in and educate our students, we save money, but the big part thing is that Moore County children get educated. How they get educated, whether we're the, whether we are the Board of Education that's in charge of the school or not, it doesn't matter. The key is to educate all the students of Moore County.
It says $35 million somewhere down the road, because we don't have to build a new $35 million school.
All right, are you clear, Dr. Grimacy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, unless there's further comments, we are going to move on.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I said E, F, G, and, and 7A.
Very good. And continuing with the theme of disposal of properties, the next topic is regarding the old Aberdeen Elementary School. On September 14th, the school board did approve the sale of the old Aberdeen Elementary School to Pathfinder Investment Management for $1.5 million. The condition of the agreement, they deposited $115,000 in earnest money as they pursued a reasonable development plan at the town of Aberdeen for the development of the property, including the restoration of some of the structures. During their process of doing their due diligence upon site investigation of conducting topographical surveys and infrastructure availabilities, the developer came to learn that there was going to be some site improvements that they did not fully anticipate, including retaining walls throughout the site that were exceeding the heights they were planning for, the installation of a sewer lift station. And in addition to this, the town of Aberdeen Planning Department, through negotiations on preliminary layouts, confirmed with them that it, they will not support multifamily entitlements for the property as anticipated. So the PIM submitted their request to terminate under the Articles of the Agreement and, which has been conducted, and earnest money responded, or returned. They then turned around and submitted a new offer for the purchase of the property. This offer is $800,000, as is, without an inspection period. They will deposit their statutory required amount to enter into an upset bid process. And if they are successful upon approval by the board, they will also deposit an additional $75,000 non-refundable and pay the balance upon closing as soon as 30 days or shortly thereafter. After reviewing this new offer, we, along with the broker, decided that, concluded that Pathfinder is, with their offer of $800,000, is recommended to the board as a buyer for the property and for an upset bid process. Should the board next week authorize an upset bid process to commence, how that process is conducted is continued, is outlined in the executive summary. And again, as Chair Carter had noted before, the sale is not final, even at the conclusion of an upset process until the board votes to have the opportunity to accept or reject. And at any time during the upset process, the board may withdraw the upset bid process and suspend it. With that, I am available, along with Neil Ramey, to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? The proposal from the superintendent would be to recommend we accept the offer for $800,000 and begin the upset bid process again. Correct.
Are we using a multiple listing service?
We are using a commercial listing service through our broker, Atlee and Associates. They work with investors at all levels, all across the country. And they also work getting the word out with local opportunity as well.
I understand, but I really want to know, is there, there are commercial multiple listing services. Are they using a commercial multiple listing service?
Yes, I do not know the full name of it, but they are using a service that they posted on.
I, I would like to learn which, what multiple listing service they are using.
All right, are there other questions?
Yes, Mr. Barath. You had may mentioned that you go through a broker, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What, do you know off the top of your head what they charge? They charge a percentage of the sale price or?
And that, that goes back when the board authorized us to engage the services of a broker and the broker is a 2% fee. And that is not shared because it's a direct from our broker to the seller.
Are we paying anything for the listings right now?
We aren't paying anything about, beyond that. They are completely at risk and only upon the sale do they have, receive the 2%.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, no further questions, then let's move on to our last, oh, that's our last item of pending action.
Yes, madam chair, that's the last pending action item. The staff will appreciate the board's direction, the chair's direction, board's input to the chair, and the chair's direction as to the alignment of items between consent agenda and board action.
And so what this means for our new members is that we will now go down the list of items that were listed under Item 6, and we will designate them to either appear on our consent agenda next week or as an action item in which we will individually discuss them. So as I go down them, if you'll give me your preferences, we don't generally vote on this, we generally just do this by consensus as to what we see. So, Item A is the Board of Education meeting calendar. Consent agenda?
Consent.
Are we going to have a possible change on them?
I don't, well, unless we reconsider Mr. Hensley's, if you'll let me know between, in the next day or so about potential, the potential change in that October 11th day...
Let's just move it to the Tuesday, like we did the other holiday.
The...
Move it to the 12th, October 12th.
October 11th. Can we make that change without too much inconvenience?
Like I said, whatever the board desires. You have, you've done that with a couple of meetings, and then you tend to not want to do that because you don't want to have it on the same night as the county commissioners, but they may be meeting in the morning that day, I don't know. But you've done that, Madam Chair.
Is there, does anyone have an issue with moving that October, is the October 11th meeting will become October 12? Okay.
So we can make that...
Okay. Mrs. Potter?
We can make that a consent.
For the, yeah, for the proposed...
So if we go ahead and make that change tonight, it should still be able to be on consent?
Okay. So we'll take that under, as long as there's no opposition to that, Ms. Potter will make that part of the item.
All right, the second one is the amendment to the second semester reopening and implementation of Plan A. Consent agenda?
I don't think so. I think the public deserves to have us vote on that, and we need to also listen to the public because I'm sure they may have comments, so I would rather that not be a consent agenda.
Okay, then Item B will be action. Item C is the purchase of a new activity bus.
I think we are waiting on information, so that would have to be an action.
Well, the information that we're waiting on does not pertain to the purchase of this particular activity bus. It pertains to the use of yellow buses, which will not affect one way or the other whether we purchase an activity bus.
Madam Chair, I disagree it does because it may turn out to be less expensive to use the yellow buses than buy a new bus and operate it.
So probably just action.
All right, Madam Chair, it's been the board's tradition that if any member of the board is uncomfortable with placing it on the consent agenda, you tend to make it board action.
So D, E, F, and G, all regular?
Wait, D, the bonus for classified employees?
Consent.
Consent?
Action.
All right, and then E, F, and G obviously need to be action items.
Yeah, all of them.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call for a 15-minute recess. We need to do this because our IT folks need to get with our three new board members. So we're going to, it is 9:08, so at 9:20 approximately, we need to be back, 9:23.
Chair Carter, headline D, is that action or consent?
Yes, Madam Chair, we're back to Mr. Barath. Mr. Barath.
Thank you, Sheriff Carter. Okay, rolling on with property disposal, Aberdeen Primary School. At the November 9th, Board Business Committee in the Board accepted an offer of $120,000 for the old Aberdeen Primary School to begin the upset bid process. Public notification was issued promptly thereafter, and within the 10-day period, staff did receive an upset offer in the amount of $127,000. As outlined in our previous discussion regarding the upset bid process, we then posted the new upset number for a 10-day period which will conclude at 5:00 PM on December 14th. The minimum upset amount for this round would be $133,400. And as noted previously, please keep in mind, it is not final sale until the Board is for the opportunity to evaluate the outcome and render its own determination. And so, this is an update to that, but if there's any questions you may have to me regarding the process, happy to answer them.
Mr. Barath, would you please clarify the 501(c)(3) status of the Sandcats Wrestling Group?
Yes, the initial offer by the Sandhill Sandcats Wrestling of $120,000, they are incorporated. They are also, letter provided by the IRS qualifies them as a 501(c)(3) status, and their articles of incorporation are on the state's site.
And you do have paperwork to certify that?
Yes, we did receive that.
Okay, and the contact for that happens to be a Pinecrest employee, but is there any connection whatsoever with Pinecrest High School?
No.
Other than the personal connection, do they have adequate paperwork to validate that they're separate from Moore County Schools and Pinecrest High School?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Barath? Otherwise, we'll take this just as information. Thank you. We'll wait on the next update.
Thank you.
And at this time, Madam Chair, with your permission, please continue.
Dr. Locklear, for item 7B.
Thanks, sir. Madam Chair, Board members, good evening again. It has been the routine of staff to bring the Board an update to our compliance with the North Carolina requirements under their K-3 class size mandate twice a year. The state runs a report twice a year to monitor our compliance, and we've brought to the Board an update of our systems and processes to do so. The chart in the executive summary outlines what the requirements are this year under House Bill 13. There's a district average class size requirement that we not go over 18 students on average in kindergarten through third grade in our district this year. There's also an individual class size cap of 21 students in any individual class, K-3. The law requires that we, as a district, by annually sign and submit an affidavit testing to the class size, and the superintendent signed that. And the test that the superintendent has done everything in his knowledge or her knowledge to make sure that the district is in compliance. Our planning, accountability, and research department uses an internal process to maintain compliance with this, continue compliance with this. The department manages and looks at class sizes via our individual school data managers, and we also have systems and processes across the department to do so. This is just to inform the Board that we continue to be in compliance with the requirements of the class size law, and we'll be submitting the superintendent's affidavit. Certainly open to any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you. Our new members have not met Mrs. Kate Fall, who is a whiz at figures and statistics who keeps up with this information, but ADM is collected on a very regular basis. Even in the middle of the year, if our class sizes were to get out of kilter, we could end up having to add a teacher unexpectedly just by having two or three kindergarteners come into the school and throwing a class above the class size. So, we admire the fact that our staff is keeping up so closely with these class sizes, and that you aim to have them below the average rather than at the average. So, we appreciate your proactive planning along those lines.
I have a real quick question.
Are there other questions?
So, how are these compliance numbers affected by COVID and remote learning? If the students all came back to school, would we still be in compliance, is my question?
We're still required, per general statute, to stay in compliance with these numbers, even during COVID. Those are not waived, whether you're talking about a virtual class or whether you're talking about a face-to-face class. These requirements were not waived.
Let me ask my question again. I think I was unclear. So, if everyone returns back to school, are we in compliance?
Yes, sir, we will be compliant.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. You said our average class size of K-1 through
Three.
K through three is, do I read 15 point something? Am I correct?
That is correct. That's 15.55 overall and 15.29 in our reading classes. That's correct.
So, we got 15.55, but in grades four and five, because I want to get a read on what our next goal is, because I know that the Board has always been concerned about that. What is our class size, or do you know?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but it's much higher than that. We're not required by the state.
There is no cap.
There is no cap, yes, ma'am.
No, no, I understand it. I'm just trying to get the difference, because I know that it is a priority, and, you know, it's also one of my personal priorities. I'd like to see four, five look more like one through three. And I know there's a money problem and the like, and hopefully, we're going to work those things out, but.
Let me just say, so noted on that. That's part of the budget development process. You're going to get a much more thorough report. Tonight is simply about the state compliance. Mr. Hensley's question is right on. What happens if the 400 students come back? We want to make sure that we've got the capacity to make sure that if that were altered, those'd be 400 students spread out over K through 12, so then a subset of those would be K through three. But the broader question of how we get at pupil teacher ratios and how that affects budget is a relative question. It's just not tonight. We're not, he's not, Dr. Locklear is not prepared to go into that much detail on that this evening. If I could, just to make sure the record is clear on this, you were very certain when he asked you the question, if those 400 students came back tomorrow, would we still be in compliance, K through three?
I didn't understand that was your question, Mr. Hensley. I apologize. If the 400 students that we were reduced from where we were last year came back, no, we wouldn't be in compliance. We would have to, we would have to look at where we are, and we would have to be in compliance, though, and we'd have to look at how do we staff our schools to be in compliance, because the law requires you to do so. But if that happened tomorrow, and they all came back, no, sir, we most likely would not be in compliance.
Was Moore County Schools in compliance before COVID?
It was in last school year, yes, sir.
Yeah, there.
Otherwise, they'll take their salary. That's a hell of a motivator.
Yeah, without getting into reviewing the history of all the months since the beginning of COVID, a key decision made by the General Assembly was to hold our funding harmless this year, even though we lost 400 students. So, that funding for that 400 students was sustained in our budget, even though we lost those 400 students. That money is going to go away next year, and that's the reason why Andrew is holding back that $800,000. And when he has the opportunity to go back and review his metrics, he'll be able to give you a specific answer about what he needs to ensure that if those 400 children come back next year, that $800,000 minus 150 is the money we're holding back to make sure that when that state money goes away, that there's going to be something to get us some staff members to accommodate those 400 kids when they come back. If you go back through all the school board meetings, particularly August, Andrew, and September, that those discussions were had. You came back every month with a budget presentation showing how that money had to be held back, and the ADM hold harmless provision, how that figured in to this. So, the state made that motion that money is there, and so theoretically, if those students came back theoretically tomorrow, the money is there to hire the staff to accommodate them, and yes, we could do that, but we wouldn't have any carryover at that point to cover us for next year. All theoretical, as I know you, the question was theoretical, but that's how it would work.
Just for a little bit of quick history, the legislature showed compassion on our K-3 classes a few years ago, and mandated these smaller classes, finding it critical to reading development and early basic math development, to have the smaller classes, and we appreciate that. What they didn't do was fund them at the time. And so, to put more teachers into those early grades, we had to take teachers out of higher grades. And that's why you have classrooms where you have 32 children in a fourth grade or a fifth grade class. Now, this is an area that we have approached our commissioners on routinely to ask for additional teachers to cover this, because this is a mandate that happened without our consultation. So, this is where we come up a little bit short, because we don't have teachers to keep those class sizes as small as we would like for them to be in fourth and fifth grade. You'll get more history on that one, too, as we approach budget time.
Dr. Locklear, advise the new Board members of which, is it February or March, where you come back with a very thorough analysis of current pupil teacher ratios, and based on enrollment projections, you project those ratios for the coming year and what your staffing needs are? Is that February or March?
That'd be February, sir. We'll come back with an analysis of our projected student membership next year.
Right.
And how many teachers will be required as a result of the K-3 class size mandate, and what class sizes will look like with no other.
That's right. And so, the report in December is more of a mid-year check on our compliance with the law, because if we don't meet that now with the submission of this report, we can get in trouble.
That's correct, and we'll bring an update in the spring as well, because they also do that.
The detailed deep dive report is in February.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that help, Mr. Levy?
Yes.
You'll see, after you've been on the Board for a whole year, you'll see a cycle of these, and they all sort of fit together, and that'll be in February.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Mr. Barath, item 7C.
Okay, this will be brief construction update for the projects. There's only one remaining, and that's the Pinehurst Elementary School. And I didn't turn it on. Whoops, went too far. Okay. I guess I should. I'll leave it off. I'll let you do it. Okay, so architectural rendering of the Pinehurst Elementary School. Next slide, please. Here you can see the progress of it. You can see how the base binder has been put down in the parent pickup, drop-off, and parking in the front, which is in the foreground. To the right, you can see the bus loop drop-off and parking for staff over there on the right side, and the base binder is down there. You can see by the overlay on all the roofing that it is under roof and dried in, and you can see the long parts of the metal roofing system that are already being staged on the roof in various areas. Next slide, please. So, coming around the building, again, in the foreground here, that's where you come into the site as a parent to do your pickup, drop-off, to come in, drive along to the right side of the screen, loop around to the front. And so, the front drop-off would be up to the right of the screen. I'd point, but I can't. And then, coming around the back, you can see, next slide, the play area in the back of the building here, and the gym structure there on the left side in the two-story classroom on the right. Next slide, please. So, from the ground level, you can see how the brick has progressed and the window insulation is going on. The yellow you see on the right side is the spray-on insulation. That's the last area of brick masonry that was needed to be put up as of last week, Wednesday. Next slide, please. Inside, this is when you go into the main entry area. You can see the terrazzo has already been poured on the floor in this area with the accents in there. They haven't grounded. This is obviously the first rough pour of it, and you can see them working on overhead electrical and infrastructure. Next slide, please. Down one of the classroom wings, where you can see they've already begun applying their block filler and first coat of paint on the walls, and the ceiling area is getting ready to have the grid installed as, again, the mechanical electrical plumbing overhead is wrapping up. Next slide. Classroom, this is an area they already have the grid laid out in. They already have two coats of paint on the wall in there, and the first application of terrazzo is down, ready for grinding, and you can see the windows with their protection on them and the door to the exterior. Next slide. Administration area, same thing. Drywall has been put up and sanded down and primed and first coat of paint on there. Two coats already up high, and the ceiling grid system going in. Next slide, please. This is looking down towards the gymnasium area. Off to the right is the media center. To the left is the art and project room. And so, you can see how the infrastructure over there is going. This is an area that's a little, not as far ahead as the others. They sequence through the building, through the classroom wings, and then into this space. So, here you can see the walls have not been primed yet. Next slide, please. This is just looking at some of the kitchen area as they've begun receiving their hood, exhaust hood element there in the foreground, getting all the ductwork and infrastructure in overhead so they can be ready to install this, and the area is getting prepared for receiving the walk-in coolers and freezers off to the right. Next slide. This is the media center, a little overexposed in the middle with the Pan photo on there. Apologize for that, but you get a sense of how the scale that's coming together. They're getting the GIP board partitions up on the left side in there, and the mechanical ductwork distribution as well. Next slide. So, again, just to remind everybody where we are and where we were. So, the notice proceed was back on October 15th in 511 days for completion in March. There was an impact for the asbestos abatement that needed to be done on one of the buildings and at the gym, and that extended the duration to April. Seventy-two percent of the timeline has passed, and as far as a metric against timeline and process of payment, I always like to see the timeline ahead of their progress on payment, and so, we're staying at a healthy 66% paid on 72% progress, so about 6% gap there, which is where we'd like to see the project as you're pushing into the finishes. To the state, we haven't used any of the contingency or inflation that was used outside of the original award of the contract. And so, that's the project right now, and if there's any questions regarding Pinehurst.
I just have a comment. I drive by there a lot, just because it was my, I just have a little, my heart is in that school, but it is huge. I mean, those pictures don't do it justice of how big and beautiful and how well we use that property. I mean, we really used every inch of that property, and I'm just, I'm very proud of it. It's a beautiful school. I can't wait to get in there and just see it.
Neither can the staff and the students.
Yeah, I bet.
Soon, soon. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Groose, I'd like to suggest that we are about to go into closed session again. Do we go ahead and take Board comments at this time before we go into closed session or return to closed session?
Madam Chair, we're.
Madam Chair, that makes, I was thinking the same, I was thinking along the same lines. I think that would be helpful for many ways, just to keep things clean. I suggest we have a motion to amend the agenda. Since the agenda was already approved, it would require two-thirds vote, but if two-thirds of the Board members agree, then we could certainly flip the order of those two items.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to change the agenda to move to Board comments before we return to closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will now proceed to Board comments. And I routinely just go down the row of the table. So, Mr. Holmes, do you have comments you'd like to add?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Ms. Caldwell?
Just a couple, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. I would just like to publicly thank our Health Department and our Commissioners for providing funding to purchase our kiosk and a mask for our students and our staff. That just helps us out, you know, every little bit helps. Also, congratulations to the students, teachers, and Ms. Metcalf at New Century for submitting their video to the North Carolina State Board Association. They actually won. So, congratulations to our Principal, Ms. Metcalf, and the staff. We were just so proud to see that this year at our virtual meeting. It was good.
This was the first year that we actually entered, right?
Yes. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley?
I would just like to thank everyone who helped put the meeting together. It takes a lot of effort to put together a meeting like this, from the sound system to the chairs to the audio visual to the preparation of the briefings and whatnot. So, job well done. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Dennison?
Yes, I do have a few comments. I would like to talk, the Moore County Schools Board of Education is responsible for educating our kindergarten through 12th grade students. We monitor the progress our students are making through these years and make the changes necessary to improve student performance. We certainly have, we certainly had to make changes to improve student performance. We certainly have challenges and many times have had to revise our plans, but we always are looking for continuous improvement. We have many measures to use to evaluate how we are doing, but the ultimate measure for how we have done is graduation. Even though we have had many challenges during their 13 years with us, graduation is the end result of our efforts. The 2020 graduation rate for Moore County Schools was 93.5%, the highest it has ever been in Moore County. Moore County ranked number 12 out of the 115 school districts in North Carolina for graduation rate, and ranked number one of the 42 districts graduating over 700 students. Our black graduation rate was 92.8%, up 31.4% from the 70.6 rate in 2010, and was 5.2% above the graduation rate for all North Carolina high school, public school graduates. Our Hispanic graduation rate was 90.5%, up 49.8% from the 60.4% in 2010, and 2.9% above the graduation rate for all North Carolina high school graduates. Our white graduation rate was 94.5%, up 11.8% from 84.5 in 2010, and 6.9% above the graduation rate for all North Carolina public high school graduates. Our English learner graduation rate was 81%, up 44.1% from 56.2 in 2010. Our English learner graduation rate was 81%, up 44.1% from 56.2 in 2010. The majority of our students attending our lower performing schools are economically disadvantaged. And our 2020 economically disadvantaged graduation rate was 87.5%, up 25.2% from the 69.9% in 2010 and only zero, only one tenth of a percent below the graduation rate of all North Carolina high school graduates, which was 87.6. Moore County Schools was the number one school district in the region in affinity group for career and technical education and was the only school district in the region in affinity group to exceed the state goals for all eight performance indicators. The number of credentials earned by our students increased from 534 in 2015-16 to 3,923 in 1819. To me, this is evidence that Moore County Schools has made excellent progress in improving student achievement for the class of 2020 and that we have fulfilled our responsibility of ensuring our students graduate well-prepared for college or career. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Levy?
Yes, firstly, I wanted to thank all the members of the board for being here today and for listening to our concerns. I, for instance, and two others are newly elected members of the board. We do have concerns which are different from some of the concerns that have been voiced before. Clearly, Moore County Schools strives to do a great job for great students, but we have to also do more. I am concerned about, number one, something which we didn't talk about today and hopefully we'll talk about it soon in the future, and that is cybersecurity. We do know that the Baltimore schools were hit with ransomware. And while I have a great deal of faith in our IT personnel here, I mean, I've dealt with them and they seem like wonderful people. We as a board need to make sure that we're on top of these things because the worst thing that could possibly happen is a successful attack on our infrastructure. Next, we're going to have to address, I hope, on a bi-monthly basis, our struggling schools. I don't want to dwell on them because clearly our staff and our teachers are trying to do the best job that they can. And I know they're doing a good job, but we do have some struggling schools and we are, I don't want to have to wait until next year when we reevaluate these schools. We need to, especially our restart schools, we need to do this on a bi-monthly basis. Even COVID should not stop us from making sure that we are, that we are meeting the needs of these students. We're going to have a gap. We're going to have a, an educational gap which has resulted from COVID. We're going to have to try to meet that in addition to working for, with our challenging, with our challenged schools. So we have a lot in front of us, including, and I will say it again, which is something that I did say earlier. Sometimes we think about buses and shoulder harnesses and seat belts as troublesome items that just cost money. They actually save lives. And if we don't start addressing those things, heaven forbid that there would be an accident. Clearly, we try to do our best to have great drivers, but we cannot, we cannot predict the drunk driver that doesn't see the stop school bus ahead of him. So we need to take every precaution we can. And that does include going that extra mile for restraints. And lastly, just to, just to tell the board what else I'm looking toward, you know, and on a lighter note, we are the golf capital of the world. We do a lot of great things for football and basketball. And yet, I would hope that we push golf as well as tennis and other social sports as hard as we push baseball, basketball and football, because these are the sports that students, when they get to be adults, they may not play a game of football, but they may need to play in business, a game of golf. And while that is sometimes difficult for us to, to create here in a school district, we need to think about that. And we need to think about just thinking outside the box. So I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate, I appreciate everyone listening.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to my fellow board members for your vote of confidence in electing me to serve as, again, as chair. I'm sure that my year of experience, which was quite a learning year, will be of benefit to us all. I look forward to working with each of you and with Vice Chair Thompson, and I welcome our new members to their seats at the table. My goal now is to create a unified board who is willing to listen, to understand, to evaluate and to work together to do what is best for the Moore County School family. Under Dr. Grimacy's thoughtful leadership, along with a strong and competent staff and qualified educators throughout Moore County, we are on target to become the goal of creating the strongest public school system in North Carolina. As we begin our tenure upon the board, I want to point out the many strengths that we now bring together, from business acumen to educational background to legal expertise. And this will work to the benefit of the children of Moore County. However, as we begin, I also want to point out that we are not joining together to work against those who have previously served. Decisions that have been made by previous boards and other boards that paved the way are not automatically reversed. These decisions are to be built upon, added to and corrected if needed. The purpose of a board is to work in tandem to make the decisions which are best for our children at that time and at that place, knowing that these decisions are often difficult. I ask that you look favorably at this new board as we go into action, that our community provides support and have trust for our decisions and that we continually remember we are here to serve the children. Okay, with that, we are going to return to closed session based upon the motion that was previously made. And when we return, it will simply be to adjourn. There will be no further business connected. Okay? All right, so off to closed session.
All right, at this time I'll call us back into session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion for the meeting be adjourned.
Our second.
Motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Ms. Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.